Good evening, I'd like to begin the Brookline Vermont Regular Select Board Meeting on April 6, 2022. The time is 6:34 PM. Present in the room is Wendtiansaw, Stan Nova, Bruce Mello, Dot Maggio, and Bytanza are our videographer. Online, on Zoom, we have Peter Barris, Fat TV, Moamaneey, and anybody else? One, two, three, I think that's it at this time. All right, we all.
Could you spell a couple of names?
Okay.
Give us a little spell.
It's having the nominee.
iPhone 13?
Oh, iPhone 13 is.
Moamaneey.
I don't know how to spell it, so I'm looking it up. Mr. Moamaneey.
Perfect.
Case for the name, first name please?
Mo, M-O-E.
Thank you. Hold the minutes.
Review changes to the agenda if any. I would love to add, when we talk about roads, the MRGP grant, an annual renewal fee of $200 later on. So we will add that to Section 6, or actually Section 6B. MRGP, man, MRGP grant, annual fee of $200.
All right, there's more than one Section 6?
We're gonna go on to Section 6.
Which section 6?
B, the one that says 7:30, then 6, and then A is supervisor, and then B is highway grants. I think that's what you're referring to.
Highway grants, thank you.
Any other changes to the agenda at this time? Hearing none, we will now review the minutes from the March 16th meeting, and we're gonna take a look at page 1. I have, okay, Bruce, go ahead.
Do we want this written as a simple information meeting? Do I'm reading my reading as well?
No, that's a, he's copied that.
Okay, I didn't even notice that. First item is in the heading of the draft minutes, Peter. The Town of Brookline Select Board Regular Meeting, not informational.
I was wondering about that.
Down under New Business, where it says, Mr. Nova will mail the documents to Mr. Bourne. I believe, and I did say, Dot Maggio will give Mr. Bourne the documents. Okay, which I did. Any other changes on page 1? Stan?
Yes, let's see, uh, one, two, three. Fourth paragraph from the bottom, where it says, Mr. Nova moved that the newly adopted acceptance form indicates a starting date of, it should be April 2022, and not April 2024.
Got it.
Any other things on page 1? Hearing none, move to page 2. None, hearing none, move to page 3. Any items on page 3? Bruce?
Um, down on, down at RFP for FEMA.
RFP for FEMA, they did.
Taking on Putney Mountain Road.
Putney Mountain Road, okay.
Sounds like Cutney Road on P5.
You should say Putney Mountain Road. All right.
There, you're talking about, you're talking about the agenda heading there?
Uh, I don't know what's in, yeah, I guess so.
Yes. RFP for FEMA, taking on Putney Mountain Road.
Yeah, okay.
Anything else on page 3? Bruce, uh, Stan?
Yeah, in the very first paragraph near the top, uh, I, what, I haven't gone back, and I apologize here. I look at your hericulin job writing these minutes up, and the number of pages and all the detail you offer. Hate to even bring this up, but, um, again, in the first paragraph of page 3, where it says, Ms. Mazio noted that Mr. Tanza had printed out and provided 77 pages. Mr. Nova, and I'm gonna suggest you cross out discuss, and instead state that Mr. Nova stated he had read Putney's plan. And, where it then says, previous one. And indicate that was the Brookline, Brookline's last plan that was read. So basically, it should say, Mr. Nova stated he had read Putney's plan and Brookline's last plan.
Uh, sorry.
I think if you go back and look at the context in the minutes, I pretty much said that. I think Dot asked me something about it, and I said, yes, I read the Brookline one too. So it wasn't a smooth going.
Okay, will this be acceptable? Nova voted, sorry, noted reading the Putney plan and Brookline's previous one?
Correct, that's good.
Okay.
That's very, thank you. And then, in the second paragraph, I should say between the second paragraph and the next full topic, we actually took a vote, I believe, to accept the Putney plan, and noted that Dot Maggio will communicate that to WRC. As opposed to saying, because it doesn't say we've accepted, I don't believe. Doesn't, when I looked at the second paragraph and type, I didn't perceive that as indicating that we had actually either reached a consensus or took a vote on it.
I don't remember taking a vote.
But we did agree.
No.
That we did agree. We did agree, I thought, in consensus, that Dot, that we accepted the plan, and that, because I think I offered a comment to that very effect, and then Dot indicated as a summary for the, this topic, that she would communicate our feelings to WRC.
I'll just add, there was consensus on approval before communicating with WRC.
It works, it works, that's right.
Okay.
And at the very bottom of the page, oh, Gwen has pointed out that in the first paragraph of vote supervisor report, in the last full line, which is the third line of that paragraph, there's two hats, had-had, and there should only be one there.
Oh, good, good eye.
Well, you know, she's wearing glasses. Oh, okay. Yeah, last, last paragraph on page 3, where it says, concern about bill of materials for RFP. The discussion where that information was offered indicated that in the most recent revised plan and RFP, there was no total cost for the construction of the shed. And it wasn't about a bill of materials for RFP, it was simply that the total construction cost is not provided in the most recent project RFP. That's essentially what needs to be said, hardly wish to say that.
Could you repeat that suggestion?
Sure, uh, no estimates, again, about the fact there were no estimates for total construction cost provided in the most recent project RFP.
There have been no estimates for total construction cost provided in the most recent what? RFP?
Project RFP.
Project RFP, got it.
Thank you.
It's done.
All right, page 4, any corrections on page 4?
Uh, yeah.
Stan?
Uh, let's see, one, two, third paragraph down from the top. Mr. Nova, it says, discuss plans, and I think what I was driving at there, I know what I was driving at there. The Mr., I would suggest you replace plans with the two words, the need. And then, yeah, and then, after the word the trans in that first line, I'm gonna suggest that there be a period inserted. And then, and then, let's see. What, I think, I understand that bits and pieces are put together, and that's great, that's necessary. I, again, think if we look back at video, you're gonna see pieces of this come together, and essentially meaning after the trans period, and then insert the Vtrans TA60, and then the word form. I eliminate the word that, and then allow the rest to go through, requires this distinction.
Discuss plans to organize a winter budget category for grants and Vtrans period. The TA60 form requires this distinction and the methodology FEMA used, et cetera?
Yep, yep.
Got it.
And then down, this should be the 23rd.
Give me a key word, you don't have to give me the geography.
Town clerk report, oh, the key word is March 21st on page 4.
That was important, or respectfully to note, that was important.
Uh, March, uh.
Town clerk's report.
Uh, yeah, town clerk report, that's where it is, first line. Gwen has aptly pointed out that the date there is actually March 23rd.
Got it.
Who's the 23rd, not the 21st?
Uh, I'm gonna tell you, tell you the area for the next one, treasurer's comments, halfway down the page, line 2, you got dire straits, comma, and I suggest so that no, there's an intent given. Uh, so we, I'm gonna say cross out that after the colon, and insert due to $81,000 more spent.
Dire straits due to?
Dire straits, semicolon, due to $81,000 more.
How about because?
Yeah, again, I, it's the meaning that counts, so however, that sounds fine.
Okay.
Uh, and I think that's it on that page, for me.
Yep, that's all that I have on my page as well. Anybody else on page 4? Go to page 5, please, any changes or modifications for page 5 minutes?
Someone else has joined your meeting, yes.
Okay, page 6. Page 7. Hearing none, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the minutes from Wednesday, March 16, 2022, as amended. May I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Bruce Mello, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the minutes as amended signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Minutes are approved as amended, thank you very much.
Got it, is somebody else joining the meeting?
Okay, Peter, I'm gonna have you add to the attendees. We have Mark Bills, Everett Mark Bills just joined us, and Glenn Bosick also joined us.
I need to make a.
Glenn, G-L-E-N-N. Okay, um, number four, members of the public. Yes, Stan?
I just realized, I didn't make a note of it at home, but I just, my mind clicked on it. There was another individual from the public who entered our meetings at the last meeting at 7:44 prior to us going into executive session. And I believe that since that person arrived, I didn't see members of the public, I don't think his name is known.
I don't know who it was.
It was Randy Bills.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, right, um.
Oh, yeah.
I'd like to amend the draft minutes to include a member of the public, it's on you, Randy Bills.
Where, members of the public?
Yes.
Mr. Town or Mr. Bourne?
It says Randy Bills, online, Peter, Moore, and.
Oh, okay, I didn't look at the top, I looked at the, down here.
Okay, nevermind, good.
Sorry, sorry.
That's good. All right, so we're on number 3, we approve the members of the public. Shelby Brimmer, if she has for a few minutes to speak to us tonight, did she, actually, I sent her an agenda, I don't see her online. So I'm going to table Shelby Brimmer, if she happens to come on later on, we can put her somewhere in the situation. Okay, old business, bid review, discussion and vote about painting bids received for the Brookline Meeting House steeple discussion, and vote on the bid award for the Brookline Meeting House steeple painting job. Just wanted to go through a couple of things I had, in case anybody would like to review over it again, the original invitation to bid that was placed in the newspaper, and I also had the ad. As you know, we had three different bidders that bid on the project, Vermont Painting Company. We also had New Paint Painters and Moamaneey Painters. We were unable to engage in consideration for the New Paint Painters because they did not have the lead, let's say, paint contract certification. He had, his, his has expired, so we were left with two bids. The Brookline Meeting House Committee met on the 17th of March, the day after the bids were open, and reviewed over them, and I was in contact just to collect the consensus of it. And based upon two major areas, one was the fact that the the limitations in the amount of money that was available, we could not entertain a previous vendor that has been hired by the town to Moamaneey Painters. His bid was $25,300, including the $2,300 for under the gable. He did, when I spoke to him on the phone, he did offer to discount the town and offer that for free as an original bid. And the other painting company, Vermont Painting Company, was, had a bid of $10,800 total labor, labor and paint materials. After reviewing about six or seven different references, both federal references and municipal references and school references for Vermont Painting Company, I received both positive references from the town administrators and school directors and such. Mr. Bosick is online, I asked him to join us this evening, in case there were any questions that may exist in any of the select board's minds. Anybody like to address Mr. Bosick? No, I'm not, most just visiting, or. Oh, no, I mean, this is, anybody wanna talk about? What do you want to read?
I'm just saying, invited to the meeting, you must want to say something.
I'm, this is a public meeting, anybody can come to the meeting. Mr. Mo, did you wanna say something before, I'm going on the bid, I'm following my job description.
Okay, okay, you're asking him a question.
Oh, no, I, I got nothing to say, I'm just here to answer questions. I'm just shocked about the $25,000, I should have bid 20, right? I'm just kidding, but, it, yeah, I mean, that, I've been doing towers for 30, over 30 years, so I don't know where that $25,000 came from, but I don't think you have any worries. It's not, it's not, it's definitely not that big of a job, I think people are busy, so.
I know the building was painted in 19.
93.
Eighty, eighty.
93, I read.
It was painted in 19, uh, what's the number here?
I don't know, I'm just.
It was painted in November of 1982 by Alfred C. Brooks for a cost of $800, which was the first time the lead was disturbed. Lead paint was used prior to 1978. It was again repainted for a cost of $2,200 by New Paint Painters in 1993. And so, I think we thought that we will probably be within the double digits, which we are, this, you know, $10,000 to $15,000 range this year.
Right.
Well, the one that was able to provide that. Does anybody have any specific questions for the vendor that the Brookline Meeting House Committee would like to, would advise the select board that they felt that the Vermont Painter Company would, based upon the recommendations, would do the job that they have with the finances that they have, and that the bid quote was what the RFP was advertised as. So at this point, I will talk to the select board, Gwen, do you have anything you'd like to ask?
No.
Which, which gentleman's from what, what company?
Glenn, Glenn is on the bottom.
Yeah.
Okay, it's Glenn, and this is Gwen. So Gwen, do you have any questions for Glenn?
No.
Yeah, okay. Stan, do you have any questions?
Uh, no, I don't, I'd just be interested in any comments that either of the two vendors, the Vermont Painting or Moamaneey Painters, if they had any observations or comments, I would ask that we, other than putting forth your bid, not, and offer anything derogatory about any other vendor, just so that everyone's, leaves the meeting with a spot.
Bruce, you have any questions, and you can address anybody, you can just be the person if you want.
Okay, I have some questions for Vermont Painting, Mr. Bosick.
Sure.
Yeah, go ahead.
What will it take to do the job, do you think?
Probably like four to five days.
And how many would you have, that will be working on it?
Um, just two of us.
Okay. Um, do you scrape oil, or you just look for pieces of paint and just scrape that off? How do you go?
They, they, the condition that it's in right now, every, every spot's gonna need to be scraped.
Every spot, you mean?
Right, just, it's gonna have to have a scraper go over every spot. I mean, there's not once, you know, it's not like you can pick at it, I mean, that'd take too long. You wouldn't just completely go over, go over each, each spot with a scraper and see what comes off.
Okay, and the wood coat of oil primer goes over the entire steeple?
Yeah, probably, yeah, you'll definitely have to prime the entire steeple.
Is that like a slow drying oil primer, I mean, is it?
Well, I mean, it, I, I haven't used oil primer in years, because everybody recommends the latex primer, but you know, if you guys wanna use oil, that's, that's your, that's your business, but you know, I would, I would recommend a latex primer, just because it, it's, it's just way more advanced. If you go to Sherwin-Williams or anybody else, they'll recommend it too, on the old buildings, just breathes better. But, I'll be honest with you, I really, I, I mean, I've done oil primer in the past, I've done latex primer, I don't see any difference in the years that come myself, but, again, I, I don't look at that, I don't look at the place like every year either, so, you know, I just pass by five, 10 years later, it looks the same as it did if I had latex or oil, I don't really notice any difference. So, I mean, I think most architects are kinda split. I see them recommend latex, and I see some of the guys recommend oil, so. But I don't think there's any problem there with adhesion to that, because the real, the real reason things peel is because of moisture that comes through the building. Really, if that's the main reason, and considering that's not a heated space, I don't think we'll have any problems, no matter what we use.
Okay, do you, um, do you normally wash the, the job, or don't wash the job?
No, I don't wash the job, just scrape it down, wipe it off with a rag and some water, and that's it.
Okay, can I ask some questions below?
Well, we're not competing, we're not gonna offer him the contract, but he can ask a question, well.
Mo, did you wanna respond to anything about the, about the oil priming?
Well, I've found that oil primer tends to soak into the wood, whereas latex is a surface primer, and tends to not adhere for as long as something that's been absorbed by the wood. And I would have to disagree about wiping off with a rag. We always pressure wash and let it dry out for a couple of days, maybe even longer.
We did not want the building washed, we want the hosing in the way.
Well, and pressure washing a lead building is legal in Vermont. So, you can wash it down with a hose, but you can't pressure wash.
Which you can wash it lightly with a pressure washer, you don't have to have a pressure.
Right.
Okay, um.
It'd probably take us a week to scrape that thing with the little inch and a half scrapers that we do.
Okay, Mr. Bosick, you said you were, this is, I've read your bio about 30 years, do I have that right?
Yeah, it's, I guess, 35 years.
Uh, Mr. Moamaneey, you've been painting for how long?
Close to 50.
And you're all using Sherwin-Williams products, both of you, correct?
Well, I mean, not lately. Last year I had to use Home Depot, because Sherwin-Williams didn't have any product to help, so, I mean, it depends.
Okay, okay, and Mo will be using Sherwin.
We always use a high-grade acrylic finish over the oil, generally Emerald Resilience.
Okay, I'm done with my questions.
All right, so at this time, if there's not any other questions, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the bid from Vermont Painting Company to do the Brookline Meeting House steeple painting, as quoted, for the amount of $10,800 to be completed, as you were aware, before, was it October 15th, something like that? Do you have, may I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Stan, any further discussion? I'll have to say through both of the pages, thank you very much, Mr. Moamaneey, we appreciate the work you've done in previous years for the town. The Meeting House just cannot afford, they don't have the money, it's all through fundraising.
I totally understand.
And I, I don't want to disrespect you in that, and that, and we do like to compare apples and apples. All right, I've said, thank you, so, you know, other questions or discussion? All those in favor of approving the bid for $10,800 from Vermont Painting Company, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
No.
Any abstentions?
No.
All right, thank you very much. Mr. Bosick, I will be in touch with you and sending some paperwork off for you. Thank you for sending the letter of aid.
Did you express your vote? I'm sorry, did you express your vote?
I did, I said aye.
You did, yeah.
I expressed my vote, did you?
I'm sorry, you must have, let me, I'm gonna redo this vote, because I don't think I heard it correctly.
Okay.
All right?
This is.
I got a little hard in here.
Yeah, me too.
All those in favor of, of the Vermont Painting Company's bid for $10,800 to do the Brookline Meeting House steeple, please signify by saying.
May I ask a question first? Are we gonna utilize the change order process, should we be advised of it if anything comes up?
Yeah, I'm gonna get in touch with them and go over the change order.
Okay, okay, yeah.
Yes, we have change orders, if there's an issue, Gwen, I'll, I'll be sending you some paperwork, and it's down
Yeah, I get it.
or emailing it, and a contract, and, and you'll have to contact your insurance company to get us the town on the, on your, for the job project, so on and so forth. So I'll be sending, I have that all here. And I'll, I'll send that all over at that time. All right, I'm gonna do a roll call vote, Gwen?
Yeah.
No, Gwen, yeah, that.
For Vermont Painters, yay?
Yeah, yes.
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 No.
No, yes, the vote is three to one, the bid, the, the bid is awarded to Vermont Painting Company. Okay, thank you.
Sorry, that went by a little bit fast, could I have the roll call, please?
Gwen Tanza, yay, Stan Nova, yay, Bruce Mello, no, Arthur Maggio, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, all right, gentlemen, thank you very much, you're welcome to stay in. Okay, all right, gentlemen, thank you very much. You're welcome to stay and hang out and watch our fantastic meeting.
I don't think so.
Wonderful acronym to watch paint dry.
You're used to that, right?
Yeah.
Well, thank you for that. You know, we love our buildings here in town and we appreciate any vendors who also show that they they have an interest in in our historic buildings. And we just got that building on the National Historic Register last year, and so we'd like to, you know, that and our other buildings. So there'll be more work to come. Uh, again, I appreciate it, and again, you're welcome to stay. All right, thank you.
I'll see you later.
Okay, take care.
Bye, Mo.
All right, um. Okay, next item here, um, if we see, if we see, shall we, let me know. All right, um, Stan, you had done an amended or edited um, uh, agenda and you had asked us to put DV fiber, but I I just reiterate that we did appoint Donald Domain as the DV Fiber Representative for Brookline. Uh, the Southco representative has been vacant for years, it's still vacant. Deputy Forest Fire Warden is Michael Whynot.
And where are we?
Page one.
Page one, five B.
Oh, okay.
And a rescue Brookline representative, I do note in, when we get to emails, that Gorda uh, uh, Chapin, Dino Chapin has said that her busy schedule is not allowing her time to attend the rescue meetings. So that representative position is open at this time. So DV Fire is Mr. Domain, Southco is open, Deputy Forest Fire is Mike Whynot, Rescue is open. Okay? All right, I do have the big word for the select board appointment to the Deerfield Valley Communication Union District for Donald came in to email this week, and I'll send it off, uh, with his name on it. Okay, next item is uh, a little brief discussion on ARPA. Um, a couple of weeks ago, we had some, I did some brainstorming, put together a list, no reason or I don't reason behind it, but just some of the things that I thought that we could use in town. But Guy and Stan, neither, you guys have, what does the town need that might be ARPA? So that we can have something to look at.
Well, I, um.
I know you were talking about digitizing.
Right, I I I thought about the digitizing, but I just wanted to clear the air so that we know that the ARPA funds, if we use the standard allocation, that we can expend as much as we want of the seventy-nine thousand dollars in a um, a very simple way. Uh, so just to clear that air, that's what I heard from, and I've spoken to some other towns, and that's the way they're treating it. I don't know if you feel the same way, Stan, from.
Yeah, I think Dot and I just watched a video yesterday, wasn't it?
Okay, yeah, so when we fill out that form, which has to be done by the thirtieth of April, there's a a position in there where we'll put in the standard allocation.
Yeah, that's the one I'm asking you, Guy. I'm asking you, what would you see?
Okay, I just, I wanted to clear the air, so that we could spend money for digitalization of the uh,
Yes, that's actually listed on one of the items.
of the uh, of the files in the uh, in the vault. I I think it's an important thing to have that in the cloud.
So what's that called?
Um, digitization, and then, there's a couple of vendors, Co-File is one. Um, it's an ongoing expense, because once they digitize it and they have the ability to access it, there's a fee that they charge on a monthly or yearly basis, but that's pretty much part of the program. Uh, it's important to do because we're down to book twenty-two, we've got twenty books, twenty-two books done, but as we get into the older volumes, they're far more difficult to pull apart and so forth. Whereas the vendor would come in, take pictures and do everything in a matter of couple of days, and that would work with. So that's, that's one thing that I'm thinking of.
Can I ask you though, to try, charge you to research several companies and get that information?
Yeah, I think, uh, yeah.
Okay, well, how much different companies would be charging for that, so that we wouldn't have to be able to uh, send them? If, you know, if we had to do an RFP, I don't know.
Yeah.
But I'm gonna see what your costs are for purchase policies.
Yeah, there's there's two, two companies that I that I think of right now. But um, and they're used pretty much throughout the state, and most of the feedback is very positive. And I stand, you probably work in offices where that that uh, that system is in use in your, in your job, your previous job. So um, that's one thing that I'm thinking. Um, I I would like to see the money, you know, used in town for our buildings, because I think it's important that we have this opportunity. Anything other than that, I think, uh, it has ramifications of taking care of doing things after we expend the money. Whereas if we spend money in our town, whether it be in a communications field, new computers or digitization.
That's what I wanna ask you, you want, do you think we need new computers?
Well, they're nine years old.
So how many computers do you think?
Well, we have four machines.
So four, four or five.
And what's the cost of the digitization? Um, it could be in twelve to fifteen thousand dollars. It's not cheap. Okay, but we've already, but the fact that we've already done half the books should bring our expense down considerably. Again, I don't know until I speak to them.
Wouldn't they have to update what I, what's already been done?
Uh, no, they think they can grab that, they can grab that from Nemrec, because it's in Nemrec Cloud now. But that's a question, that's a question that we could ask them. Uh, we had a representative two or three years ago, and um, they never got back to us because they were busy, and we were kind of not sure whether we wanted to use them or not, and I think it was Co-File as a matter of fact.
I think so.
But um, that's, that's one of the the things I would like to see, you know, the money, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, a hundred and sixty thousand dollars, will, that will be expended quickly. I'd also like to see.
Why?
Why? Because you can't buy much with a hundred and sixty thousand dollars.
I think you'd be surprised.
Well, okay, but I also, yeah, I would also like to see possibly the town invest in some machinery. Because I really feel that as time goes on with vendors and their costs and everything else, we just move five, spend five hours of moving stone and everything else, it costs us uh, thousands of dollars. Uh, it's getting to a point where Mark doesn't have anything to deal with.
Guy, I I don't think you understand, I don't need to put you on the spot, but I just wanted, I'm listening. I don't need, we don't need to have, I I, we know we need machinery, we know we need to keep the.
Well, lots of things that.
But do you need, you need four or five upgraded computers, you need digitization, uh.
That's pretty, that's all that I require.
Do we need cameras? Do we need?
Well, we could, again, this works, but we could get the Echo, which is a thousand dollars. But this works, the Echo, the only thing about the Echo is the Echo would work on that desk. If Mark wanted to speak, he would have to come to the desk, whereas with this that we paid a hundred and, two hundred and forty-nine dollars.
This sounds pretty good.
I can move all around. So, you know, that's, that's not a do or die situation.
All right, I'm gonna, I'll leave your handwritten notes, but if you wouldn't mind sitting, thinking and like, sending it out as you think in the next couple of days, just just because we're gonna compound the work.
Yeah, soon as I, soon as I get the chance.
I'm thinking that we may actually want to have a uh, a uh, a short agenda, a limited agenda special meeting to talk about these these ARPA projects, because I know with with what we learned on the workshop yesterday, you were in the meetings, um, that and what other people might wanna see the the projects being done, that we really should focus on. We can't do it in a two-hour meeting with every other thing going on. So I don't know how this committee feels about having a special meeting next week.
I, I.
You know, some of the work that you're doing, it would be ARPA.
Well, I wanna respond to that meeting yesterday, but that I tried to understand and then you fall asleep. I had a hard time following and understanding, maybe I'm just, was diving into the middle of the river rather than starting at the beginning of it. But I had a hard time understanding what they were talking about. I couldn't keep up, there's a lot of terminology that I, that I didn't, didn't. I wasn't sure of the understanding of it. Okay, saying that, you're, says ARPA wishlist, what does that whole need? I think we, I'm gonna get into it in the building report, but I think we need to concentrate on what needs to have happen now. Everything else can come down with motive, if we have a good plan.
Yes.
And I'll go into that later. Um, but um, like I said, I had, you might have a good idea of sitting down and hammering out an ARPA wishlist. I've already done it on the one that we we made out, we went over it a little bit yesterday, Doc. Um, and I think, like I said, I get to more in the building report, but we have an incredible opportunity, and I'll get into it later. Uh, what we can do with this money, and I'll, and I'll state my opinion when we get to it. I think, I think you started right off. I think we need to upgrade some things in this, in this town hall, and I guess we need to do some more ideas for the town hall, but we're getting to it later.
Okay, uh, I do think it's important, I I don't know if you were able, did, were you able to? Well, let me ask you this, did you start from the beginning of the ARPA meeting, or did you just go in the middle, in the beginning? Because it was in three parts. The first part was Katie Buckley, and she talked about the the whole process, and we understood now that that it's pretty wide open, as we were, and not, we were like, what?
Okay.
And the second part was about the treasurer's job and how the monies can be recorded. So if you haven't seen that, it's gonna be on the VLTC website, and her speech part was about twenty minutes long.
Yeah.
And she was phenomenal, um, explaining how to move the monies through the Nemrec system.
Yeah.
So, um, yes, so that, so there is that.
Yeah, I'm just comfortable with knowing that you guys understand, um, what we can do with the money. That's all I need to know. Uh, Guy's got the responsibility of how to, how to, how to at it for it. But we are responsible, I know how to, how to expend it. I just wanna know if we're going the right way and we, and the opportunity. If Chris Campney was right, basically saying it's pretty much wide open, it's hard for you to expense.
Um, so how does the select board feel? I know we meetinged out for a while, and then we had a three-week break, which was glorious. But I would like to suggest a limited agenda meeting next Wednesday, just to talk about ARPA.
Couldn't it be more like a work session like we've had in the afternoons, where we sit here and, you know, don't make any decisions and then bring it to the select board meeting after, you know, because they seem to be more productive that way. It's not at night when people are real tired. Um, for me, it worked pretty well to spend two or three hours in an afternoon.
That's fine with me, and I can.
Well, I I guess you'd have to take a, the.
I I don't want to ever uh, skirt around any sunshine law, but I can put out on the listserv, and I can post a, a, a basic meeting, it's a meeting, it's a work meeting is a meeting meeting. And that's a funny thing with the sunshine law, sometimes work sessions should also.
But if we don't vote on anything, okay, okay.
We're not gonna make any decisions, but we're not gonna make any decisions.
Right, we can, we can follow that up on the end of the next.
You could have an open conversation.
Is that?
We can decide what we like to do and then we have to vote at the next meeting. Does that sound right?
Yeah, yeah, as long as, yeah, I just read that stuff today, and it's uh, it's uh, it's a, it's a close call, but as long as we're not making any, as long as we're just working.
Right.
On detail, looking at detail, whatever.
And take air notes, and then we bring it to the select board as an agenda, both in that and public in the next meeting, yeah.
Right. This is a good idea, this is a funny idea.
One, would you like to have an ARPA meeting, two, workshop meeting for us, I'm I'm pretty available?
I'm I'm available both, uh.
This week is uh, pretty full for me, but um, next week, I'm I'm open for.
Next week, yeah, I'm.
I'm open for Tuesday, but there's, I've got a nine-thirty great appointment for ransom, fourteen, which is Thursday.
Nineteenth to twentieth?
What day is that on?
Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday?
And Tuesday would be good, maybe around, you know, one o'clock in the afternoon?
Yeah, okay, but Tuesday, you're open here.
Right, but at one o'clock by then, we're pretty much got everything under control, and I can, you know, come in and out, but basically it's for you, for you folks to sit down and.
Yeah, we're all here.
You're the treasure.
All right, let's, let's have.
Well, no, I I know what my responsibility is. I know how to record it. I've I've worked with the, I've spoken with other treasurers and see what's going on. So I have an idea, you know, it's it's uh, we've already isolated the account.
That's all we needed to do, we're good, we're good.
Yeah, we already have it as an isolated account, and then what I'll do is I'll put sublets in there, so that if we spend on something, it'll be easy to be recorded, easy to be seen, and we're all.
Could you give me a, my small favor? You know what I'm gonna ask? Give me a bike, a balance and super cash.
Forty-six, forty-six hundred dollars.
That's what we have right now.
Right now, counting the six hundred and sixty-seven dollars that we had for the rent for this month.
That's including this rent, where we at, April.
Okay.
Six, 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 forty-six and change.
What was that again?
Tuesday, April nineteenth.
Thank you.
Is that the right date? No, wait, April twelfth, honestly, that's here.
We could talk.
Yeah, yeah.
April twelfth at one P M, we'll have a committee working, working meeting to look at our ARPA knowledge, and at that time, we can log into our portal. There are roles that have to be assigned, and they suggest that for every uh, department assignment, that it'll be two select board members, and since we're two people. So since we are such a small committee, we will all have several, several jobs.
Didn't, have we established a portal? I thought we did.
We did.
Yes, okay.
But we have to assign roles in the portal, and they said that you need to have at least two, and I found a webinar, a work webinar yesterday, it sounded like it was more than three or nine.
The treasurer and then ahead, and usually the select board chair, that's what most times.
Well, that's what we signed up for, but from what I understand, I thought there were more than one type of committee, we'll have to see.
Okay.
That day, we'll, we'll, we'll clear, we'll work, work from there. That would be great, I'd be much better with that. All right.
To assist you, when the information in King up is a new employee at VLTC that deals with the accounting end of town residents, and her name is Sarah Macy. She's got this ARPA thing down to a science, she gave examples, I would suggest, if you wanna get it from the horse's mouth. She's, that's her name, Sarah Macy.
Yeah, V L C treasurer?
V L C T, no, she's not treasurer. Okay, her assignment is to help town municipalities with their accounting systems, and she's sharp on ARPA.
She does governmental accounting.
There you go.
And it was pretty, uh, she made it so simple.
Let me ask a dumb point, I was not dumb.
Well, it is pretty simple. We already isolated the account, like I said, we have it in a chart of accounts, we have it as a separate thing, and the bottom line is that we can put the sublets in there, but I certainly will, I listen to anybody and makes my job easier, I'm I'm all for that.
Yeah.
Can I ask, what, what can't we use the money for?
Yeah.
Um.
I got the, you didn't see?
You just got some?
Engine, I, what'd you say?
You didn't see the list, she had a list there.
No, that's probably when I fell asleep, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay.
Uh, it'll be fun being fun.
Pretty much, pretty much you can use it for anything, other than I think, and again, I don't know if that's been clarified, whether we can pay off a.
No loans.
Not, no, not alone, I'm talking about the grant money, the matching funds.
Yes, we can.
Okay, so that's, all right, that was the only one that I had in question, not that I'm recommending that, but that was just the, an option.
Are you standing with the computer?
So a little bit.
If you log on to the V L C T website, go to ARPA.
Yeah, she's got the whole, yeah.
The whole video that was there yesterday, I think it should be here today, and you can watch it again, or just speed it through it.
Yeah, and then, yeah, and then, come up with, okay. Because I was pretty out straight this turn, even when I was watching.
Yeah, sometimes you have to watch those things actually two or three times, because you don't absorb everything.
When I was, when I was going to college, this is, to me, was a known fact, you read the book once, read through it, you go back a second time, really understand.
Yeah, yeah, you do, and there's a lot of truth in it.
Okay.
Okay, we're gonna move on now to new business. I have it here, I'm gonna read this thing, and it's very, it's, it's, okay, introduction for the idea, which we have brought up before, for a Brookline Gathering and Gathering Event. Going to be led by the Brookline Meeting House Committee and hopefully other community volunteers. The suggested dates that they would like, the Brookline Meeting House Committee would like to see that this event happen would be Saturday, July ninth, and/or rain date, Sunday, July tenth. It's not the Fourth of July weekend, it's the weekend after, but we do hope that the weather would be nice. We would look to provide a day this summer, or a partial day this summer, with town residents where they can gather to enjoy each other's companies and visit the historically important areas in Brookline, including the Round Schoolhouse, the Brookline Meeting House, historic homesteads. Suggested ideas that are included but are not limiting to having an ice cream social, a ten afternoon barbecue, a food truck, children's activities, softball game, photography contests, a residence, um, of Brookline locations during the different seasons to be put out into a fundraising calendar sale for the holidays. This was Cynthia Now's idea. And collecting suggestions for ARPA fund applications that are also important to the residents could be part of that activity, as Chris Campney suggested. The July Planning Committee, the July Planning Committee is requesting a consideration of using some of the monies in Fund Six, identified as the community fund monies to support the program. For example, when I researched uh, renting porta-potties or tents or supplies, I mean, there are costs associated with that. Uh, back in Friday, November twenty-sixth, the Brookline Treasurer noted that the that the Fund Six Old Community Group has been enacted and ha, uh, cannot be deleted from our accounting system because it's prevented by Nemrec, but there is a positive account. But there is a positive account balance of two thousand sixty nine dollars and twenty five cents. So I would like the board to do one of two things tonight. And that would be to consider the July ninth date for the committee to start researching and working on this. And we will do an outreach through other besides just like that that committee. Uh besides the date, but also consideration of uh of being able to not use Brooklyn Meeting House monies, but to spend down the community group money for community activity.
Yeah.
So, yes, Bruce.
Um. Stephanie and Suzie said you wanna be a part of something like this.
Yeah, she said she'd like, they would like to participate in this.
Okay. And this, I actually, right now, I'm just reacting to an email. Did you see about the pin that you need for the for the uh for the.
Yeah, I have it, I looked it up, I don't have it.
Okay, I just wanted to remind you that, that's okay.
Okay, um.
This is good.
So is 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 uh July ninth, tenth that weekend? I mean, I know we have to contact our insurance, all you know, insurance to see about having this event. And you know, like I said, tents, rentals and porta potties and and chairs and tables and supplies. But if we knew that they didn't have to fundraise for this, then it would make the whole planning process, even for a big five or six hour day or, you know. Can I tell the committee that we can start calling vendors and looking for renting porta potties and that for that weekend? How do we go, what would you suggest?
We remember voting that.
Um. I think it has to be a little more organized before you start calling, um, you know.
Well, no, we need to reserve, we need to reserve, I wanna know, can we reserve the date?
Right.
Support, support that that this activity.
Thank you, I understand.
I I uh, you know, have been through meetings with other organizations where there's a good plan, it's a wonderful plan, a lot of thought, time and effort leads to it. And then when the day comes and the people show up, the number of people that show up makes all the effort. Uh, but but it doesn't match, there's no justification.
It's frustrating.
It's frustrating. So I'm wondering if we just through the 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 kind efforts of the board must just ask, if we were to do this on July ninth or tenth, how many people would be interested in a tent?
Right, you're right.
We get twenty people, I don't know if that's worth it. We get twenty five, you know, what number? Because I I just hate to see the committee and us, all, both groups have a lot of time and effort already that they tweak spend normally.
Right.
To add another thing and find out that we're gonna get fifteen, twenty, twenty five, I guess we need to reconsider that. And and not making a guarantee that they tell us they're coming, but would you be inclined or would you intend? So we have some reference point before we do any formal planning, I don't know how that sounds, so.
No.
Okay, I will bring this up to the meeting for P M H tomorrow night's meeting, that's a good point.
Yeah, that meeting tomorrow night?
Yep.
Okay.
So um what is the date? If 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 we're gonna start looking at it, can we say, can we start talking, trying to solicit other volunteers? We need to say, are you available, can you help us plan a event for July ninth? That's what, that's our first step, trying to get more people.
Does the kitchen work in the meeting house at all?
No.
Yeah.
No, I mean, is it all, are you, oh, okay.
There's a lot of, stove is here, I don't know what's hooked up.
Stove's working?
Stove's working?
Yeah, new stove.
Yeah, I I would say if we're only looking at two weeks to the next meeting, that even even uh, you know, reserving things now, can we wait fourteen days?
Sure.
I mean, that just, I, yeah, plan on the date, but.
To get a better handle.
Gonna get a, get this notice out and see what we get, give them the date of the next like or maybe the day before. You know, I mean, not them, but the towns, ask the, probably by the nineteenth and second or two, whatever. Whether us on the board or the town website or whatever, to to indicate whether they think they might attend it. And then and then decide how far we should go further in efforts in the.
Okay, so if I need to spend money to do a survey, mail survey for the town, can I?
Just say.
How else you wanna do it?
Well, I would say that, you know, town fathers and mothers, I think it's up to the.
Oh, you mean just the lister?
Just, yeah, yeah, on on the the board's side, not a formal, not a formal thing that's sent out to everybody in town.
Okay.
Right.
But just a quick thing in the that the staff.
They all read it for you for the.
The eighty or a hundred people that are on this. And uh, you know, ask if they, if they look, if they have access to their friends and and just send and give them an email address that we can use
Okay.
uh to to look at and register between now and the.
Okay.
Three to five people.
About the nineteenth and the.
Okay.
Yeah, it's just, it's so hard because, you know, weather can be a factor, there's so many different things.
I avoid that, but at least.
Yeah, it was showing. No, but I I think the attempt is there, you know, I remember when we used to do the Thanksgiving dinners. Initially, they were pretty much fun and there was a lot of people that showed up and then for some reason, it just started to peter out.
And then we had mystery content, it was a great, a great attendance the next year. Not even. Because finding the volunteer and this is gonna run the program and that's it, it's all about the volunteers.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I will approach the Brooklyn Meeting House just tomorrow.
It's okay, I offer that, I, you know, whatever anyone else thinks is fine.
That's fine.
You know, I I'm accepting, I'm just offering an idea to be helpful.
I would touch base with Lori Clark because she used to do those things before and pen, um, um, what's her name, um, uh Neil, Joyce Neils.
Yeah, Joyce Neils, yeah.
Joyce and and Lori, they were very instrumental before and they might be, maybe they wouldn't be able to do some, but maybe they can give you some good ideas or something.
I did, I did review over the binders of the different parties that have been held in the town over the years. And it was so neat to see, you know, the residents, twenty five, oh, you're, you know, thirty years younger and fifty years younger.
Oh, no doubt. Yeah.
It was like, whoa, Cynthia, Cynthia and I was running around on the field and everything else, so it was pretty pleasant to see that. All right, so I will uh follow up on that, thank you for your consideration. That will be, if you wanted to put in your mind calendar that date, that that's what we're aiming at, that seems to be the best for for that.
July ninth? Yeah, ninth of July.
July ninth, correct.
Ninth of July.
Okay. All right, the next item, this, the uh approve, the vendor list. I spoke with Judy Acempora twice again today. Um, we have a a list that was approved last year. And Judy would like us, I'm gonna ask to table this because Judy and I are gonna get together. There may be some additional vendors that she would, that we may be adding to the list and there may be some that need to come off. Um, and so if we're gonna table this to the April, um.
Twentieth.
Twentieth meeting, if that's okay with everybody else, yes, yeah?
Good question, I I know at the organization we had referenced this. We had pretty much agreed that the list we had was okay. And then we added, or made sure we added uh one or two mornings.
Yep.
That we had.
Right.
And so is what you're hearing that that list is a mess, but.
Judy wants to go to double check, make sure that we have all her ducks in a row. She's going through the files and she's, for example, she found the card tree uh has to have insurance, something has to be brought up to date.
Yeah.
Stay on, and she said there may be a another vendor that we may want to include that has not been on.
Okay.
So the reasons for that is because if we just had an audit about um organs comp and so forth.
Uh-huh.
And this, the the insurance community is the one who is really demanding this. And we need to do it, it's it's uh something that may be felt by a wayside or wasn't totally watched. But now they're watching it very carefully is like everything else.
Thank you for sharing this.
So it's not just our town, it's every town that has to do this. Just so everybody knows that we're not singling out anybody or anything.
Yeah.
It's a requirement by the insurance community that.
It's a strange.
Did you have that other electrician, is it working here?
It's not on here now.
Okay.
That's what I'm saying, we we need to, there there has been, this was done in July uh last year.
Oh, right, okay, which is for.
Okay, all right, um, and that's it for me, for our new business at this time, unless anybody else has another item?
Uh.
Yes, sir.
I would just like to bring to the board's attention, I sent an email in regards to the mirrors in regards to um uh four O one K and so forth and different things. Uh uh, I've sent you the email and at some point, hopefully you'll read it. But it's, it seems our best option to satisfy the commitment we made to Mark. And it also means that the town would have to join as a town and anybody who works those required hours that they're the the perimeters are, they could join it. It's an, it's a retirement thing or there's two, it's two points, either retirement fund or a four O one fund. And right now, it seems more than likely the four O one fund would work well for us. But again, that's something to review. The people from the mirrors will come or join us on a Zoom meeting to give you a little feed feedback on what it is and uh show you what the advantages are for having it.
Is there deadlines to when we need to do this?
Well.
Oh, well, there was an April, it says, you know, every quarter. And I think April first was the last one. But you know, the bottom line is that whatever we have to do, if we have to play catch up, we play catch up. But it's to get the ball rolling and then we're into it. And once we're enrolled, then things will run smoothly. And um it's not only for us, but going forward.
So so somebody like Mark would would be contributing to that? How it has.
The town, the town matches whatever it is, you'd have to read, I sent an email on March seventeenth. It has all the information that you need and explains how it works. The town has to commit, uh, you know, match the funds as we said. But it also costs the town, I think, one percent or something. The town has to contribute a certain thing as the membership fee.
Right.
But it's a good offer.
It's what?
It was set.
One percent of the, I believe, the uh, I'm not sure if it's a payroll. I I'm not sure, I'd have to look at that again because I haven't looked at it since the.
So is this more beneficial than just just having uh somebody contribute to their, like in Mark's case?
All right, you have to meet a criteria, you have to be more than twenty eight hours or twenty four hours as a full-time employee or work so many hours a year.
That's to answer my question. What's the question, what I'm writing at is if we had just set up something simple for Mark. You're and you're involving a, if I understand correctly, the whole town in in respect, and respect that if we have other employees that meet that criteria, it would fall into that, do I have to?
Right, 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 the town.
Rather than, than rather than just give it to Mark's situation individually.
Okay, when I went to the bank to see if we can just, if the town could just do a one thing, the bank was not interested, said, didn't do anything like that. Uh so basically have to join a larger organization and the mirrors, which is a state uh retirement fund, uh was the one that I was steered to and when I spoke with them, they were very pleasant, very nice. And they sent an email, which I sent to everybody and explains the whole program, what the cost is to the town, which is minimal considering what it does. Um, so.
That is a concern, if it's one person versus anybody who meets.
Well, I'll figure that, you know, I know they go the other way, but I, I, I'm always the kind of person who likes to go down the road from here to if we have two, three, four, or five more employees, then we've got a system set up that will accommodate that.
Yeah, once the town is a member, then that person can join if they so elect or if the town is part of the contractual agreement that they have for them, whatever it is. But you have to be a member of the mirrors and.
In so many hours per week.
Or year based upon. But it seems to be the only viable option after I have explored a few different uh things. You know, so we can say that if, you know, not for anything, but if a person goes and opens a four O one K and we say we're gonna match it, you know, five percent, well, we don't know if that person's put five percent in. You know, there's a lot of different things where this is a structured plan and it seems to work pretty well and we can do this now.
Uh-huh.
Yes, we can, well, I think the opportunity to join is April, that that's, you know, one of the, every three months, there's a window for people to join.
Okay.
And I don't know if it's too late for this month or not, but it's something you need to read and consider. And then we'll find out when we can join. But if we can't join in April, April May, June is the next opportunity.
Okay. Where there's big catch up.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
All right, so it's important that all of us go back and look for the email from March seventeen.
March seventeen, yes.
And from God about the M E R S.
Yeah, I saw it.
And we will, I put it for the agenda for the April twenty end.
It's it's pronounced the mirrors.
The mirrors.
Yep.
Okay, all right, thank you guys for that, that's that's great.
He is seventeen, he's seventeen.
Okay.
Seventeen, what? Seventeen.
Okay, all right, so reports and updates, road supervisor Mark Bills. I just have, if you got it, updates on road conditions, summer equipment. Uh then we'll talk about the R F Ps for the two paving and the culvert on Holland Hill and the leaf blower. So Mark, you can just review what's going on?
Okay, I'll try to make sure, um. So I guess more than anything, uh since our last meeting, I have applied uh stone to the roads in the areas that were soft and wet and that were in the trebles. And they reached a point where I can take the grader back out and uh started smoothing back up and we're making great progress now with it. Putting roads back in jig. The uh, the stone blends nicely with the gravel, it's soft and uh it's gonna absorb it and make a great base. Um. Also, we met with Megan Broome and talked about uh everything that now needed to come up to Cogan, uh Stan was there and Archie and uh Guy was here as well, and Guy, yes, and we were able to gather good information. We also, uh one of the highlights to that meeting, I I felt was our road segments that need to be uh stone lined ditches and and culvert upgrades. Um Megan brought it to our attention that we need to get like uh so many segments accomplished by two thousand twenty three. And the rest will have to be done by two thousand twenty five, so. At the rate we were going, we're we're gonna run behind if we don't set it up a little. So that was good information to to get. I also met with Doc and Stan at the town of New Fane, Town Bridge, to look at the uh portable leaf blower that they use to clean their ditches, clean the leaves and sticks from their ditches and culverts. And it was quite an impressive uh old machine. And they, they actually rigged theirs up, came as a trailer to be towed. But they had the hook to a frame that they can pick up with a bucket loader and drive down the road with a bucket loader. Remote control, um very strong wind turbine on it. Um, so I thought that was great that Doc made great.
Well, you know, I didn't, J Jay Wilson was ill, so Mike Fontaine helped us out. And Jay was supposed to send me what the R F P was for New Fane so that we can get that going. And he hasn't, I'm sure he's not feeling well, but I will follow up on on that.
Okay. Or yeah, I wasn't sure, you know, we do have a deadline on that grant that we have to beat if we're gonna follow through, so. I I understand talking with Mike Fontaine at that meeting that uh they do a lot of dealing with Tenco who who was selling this particular item. And now they no longer sell it, they dealt with H P Fairfield's. And uh, I'm not sure if there's any others in in the area, Stan?
Yeah, I spent some time on this this morning.
Yeah.
And uh, there are four different locations that have this kind of thing for sale.
Okay.
I'd be happy to provide you with the names of the four.
Sure.
Uh, all four have what have uh uh sites throughout New England and parts of the east coast of the United States.
Okay.
You're right, Tenco, I listed, I looked under uh municipal equipment and Tenco showed up. And it looked like they're primarily dealing with heavy trucks and stuff that you use for cleaning the airport runway. So and they're not offering in their list of of sales items, eight leaf floor, they're just not listed yet.
Sure.
Uh, but uh, it one that is probably gonna be our, among the two top is Finch, F I N C H, turf, D U R F. Uh, I looked on their website and uh uh they had new and used available. The new ranged in price from ten thousand dollars to fifteen thousand dollars, which is significantly greater than the grant that we're getting for.
Yeah.
I then looked under used under Finch and I have three for sale right now for four thousand nine hundred ninety five dollars. They're almost exactly what we looked at over the new thing. So uh, so I I I'm gonna make another suggestion in a moment. Uh, I looked at Fairfield's, they do not have any new or used showing on their website. And I also looked under another website uh for a company in Colchester, Vermont called Boragard Equipment. They rent equipment and I have a name and a number, if you wanna call, see if it can be competitive with the numbers you've got for other things this summer.
Sure.
Uh lady's name is Thelma Sibley. I'll, after the meeting, I'll give you this if you want, or sorry, you don't take that thing. They have a site in Concord, they have one in Colchester. Uh Finch has got a site in Avon, Mass, a site in Sutton, Mass, a site in New Milford. Uh Finch has got a site in Avon, Mass, a site in Sutton, Mass, a site in New Milford, Connecticut. And they've got some in New York, but those three that I just mentioned are the closest geographic, if you take a map and pick a blue one. Those those three and and uh. And they have sites out in the Midwest and I'm not sure where these three used ones are. But they do sell uh new ones and I don't, they didn't give prices. But I'm gonna make a suggestion, I didn't notice if we were over, when we were over in New Hampshire, uh New Fane. If theirs was, and I don't think it was, EFI, electronic fuel injection. Or regular carburation, I got the sense it was regular carburation.
Hmm.
But there are two things I'd ask that we look at and consider. Is that the EFI has saved gas consumption, gas consumption by twenty percent.
Yep.
It's over a long haul, even if there's a slight increase to that, it may be beneficial to look at that aspect.
It'll.
The three used ones did not appear to be that type.
It seemed to be.
Just regular carburation, but for five thousand dollars versus ten and fifteen. The price is good, we may have to trailer it back or pay to have a trailer, whatever, but but those would be good things.
Do you think, do you think the grant would let us buy a new piece?
I don't know, that's the question I have, I don't have. I hope in that drawer out here, if I look at it tomorrow, there is a copy of the original application for the grant. And to see what the terminology is.
Alright.
And the worst that could happen is if it's allowable, we we buy it, build in the cost of it, and we're still giving the money back.
Yeah.
You know, we're not using it.
Yeah, we're not using the whole grant.
And we save the town.
Yeah, so how much?
Exactly. The grant, they they, the grant is for eighty percent of seventy-six hundred dollars, I think, seventy-six and seventy-eight.
Five thousand dollars.
So they were, yeah.
The they.
And we're gonna be like eighteen months, eighteen hundred.
Yeah, there's, I think Guy brought it up at the meeting we had last week, six thousand seven hundred and thirty dollars.
Sixty-seven hundred dollars.
Right.
Sixty-seven hundred dollars.
Right, and total what I matched was like eighty-seven hundred, so okay.
Oh, okay.
So so I have a suggestion, we've only got ninety days to go, so we gotta have this thing here.
Yep.
The 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 way the economy is, it's, some things aren't being made when they should be made.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so we may even have a waiting time.
Some things aren't being made.
I looked at a purchase policy this afternoon and it said that for anything between a thousand and twenty-five hundred. Uh we prefer to get two digits. But in both the seven thousand and up and the one thousand seventy-five hundred category. Board of, this select board has the authority to authorize that we look solicit specific vendors. In this case, are the only four we're gonna have. And I checked each one, you can make an inquiry of what they are willing to sell that piece of equipment for over the internet. So that maybe we have those four for the next meeting. And have some feedback about the grant and that that next meeting, the next day, you should be able to get out there and work. So we're not playing with the end of the and losing the grant.
Okay.
Just a thought, cuz we're we're sitting here doing nothing.
Yeah, no, that's exactly what sounds like a good plan.
Excellent, thank you, Stan, for taking the time to look into that.
You are.
I did, I did email pictures of the equipment to everybody so they all let us see it.
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Now, I wanna add one more thing if I can, there were two or three other manufacturers of leaf blowers. None of them are like the one we looked at, made by Buffalo Turbo.
Yeah.
Right.
They're all in other style, they don't have the options that makes the one we looked at really, you know.
Yes.
So that doesn't have that funnel that goes out, all it has is this big circular thing.
Uh huh.
And and it has an opening at the bottom where the air comes out.
I see that.
No, nothing.
No moving.
No attachment, no others.
No.
Guide, yeah, to guide where the air goes. So it almost says to me that what we looked at is the cream puff of the industry for that thing.
Yeah, yeah, he he made it sound nice there what what he told us about it. Okay, the only other things that I had on here was uh. And I don't know if we wanna answer this tonight or the next meeting or. But um knowing that we're we're gonna have to do culvert and ditch work this summer. Can I, can I call and reserve the uh?
That was.
The what, the wheel excavator?
For.
Hold your thought. We, could we uh re-entertain that in the building report or, I can just respond to it now.
Okay, cuz we're talking about summer.
Okay, alright, alright, alright.
And, yes, hey.
I think we should, I I like your idea. Leasing of the wheeled excavator with option to buy. I think considering the amount of money that we have, right? I I write, no, it doesn't do, it does not use by ultimate money. Do you see, it's the money that we use for summer rentals in the road fund. Uh if we note noted ten to twenty thousand dollars of that money and put that towards a wheeled excavator.
Mark, did you ever get a response about if, do they do things if you rent?
Lease to own.
Lease to own?
The, I just called quick to find out uh how many years they finance. And he didn't call it a lease, they called it financing. And they do a seventy-two month finance on sixty.
Six years.
Uh maybe there's a lease somehow in there, but they.
Alright.
They were talking about strictly seventy-two months finance.
Okay, if that's all we can do, we can't do your approach. Alright, and we're talking about, and we're talking about buy situation. I would, I think this is part of my now list. Cuz I think we should keep our commitment to our road foreman and try to get him a wheeled excavator, one way or another for him. And given that we're flushed with a lot of money, we don't need to blow all our money on that. But given that we have so much in our road fund for our purchase policy during the summer that we can afford this, we can afford it now. And this man needs equipment. The blower, wheel excavator, uh 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 the attachments, uh don't mean to play, I'm sorry about that. With respect to the the grass, it was noted somewhere in these notes, that's now up to forty-five hundred a pound. That's nine thousand dollars, we cut the grass for two weeks. Nine thousand dollars charge a loan in one year. Oh, multiply, you said six years, that's fifty-four thousand dollars. That's almost a half a, half the price of a brand new piece of equipment, the last time we looked, I believe it was around a hundred and twenty. So what I'm getting is in my mind, is that we should try to fast forward this. Especially in line in like that the Federal Reserve is gonna need again next month and raise interest rates another half point. So I would think it would be to our benefit to give Mark the authority to start.
I am.
Let you, let, start hunting for a couple of choices and bring it back to the board to discuss po- possible options to buy.
I'm concerned that it's gonna take several meetings and it's not gonna get done as expeditiously as you would like. Unless someone from the select board spearheads this. Like from Guy, who's real commissioner and he did that presentation and did all that legwork in previous years there.
I think you have your man. He's sitting right around the corner, he's not a select board member, but I think he should be the ultimate uh. Uh education for us to choose. He he knows the equipment, we don't know the equipment. He, the only thing we really need to know is that he's satisfied that the equipment's gonna work for him and that we're satisfied that we can afford it. I think we should put the one-on-one to two together and basically we should let, I don't mean this in that way, Mark, let that dog run and go out and see what he can get. And and we, and let us move quickly. Uh start blogging down committees, no kitchen, and Guy, blogging down committees and waiting weeks, I don't think that's a good idea. Guy, you have a comment?
I just wanted to reiterate what the deal was when we did this a few years ago. The select board has the authority.
Yeah.
To borrow money from the state treasurer for equipment for a term of not more than five years. The 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 fee was, the interest rates were two percent. And it was a real good deal, you have two options, two times a year to apply for it. And the biggest problem, the biggest, I think, maybe, I I I don't know if mistake is the correct word. But if the select board had acted then and didn't bring it to the town meeting, I think it would have, you know, would have passed. You know, and the bottom line is that the 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 select board has the authority to spend that money.
Okay, but in saying that. If I remember right, it's two times a year that we're gonna apply for that.
Right.
Is it up for this for this quarter yet or this summer?
I think there's one in the spring and one in the.
Probably.
Uh or I I don't remember the dates, I'd have to go look in my book, but.
Okay. Bobby?
Which one you're writing?
I'm talking about if we.
The two point eight percent.
The two point eight percent.
Two, two percent and the bottom line is you can uh. They were very advantageous, they they it was the best deal that we had. The bottom line is that you have to act quickly, you have to find a piece of equipment, say this is what I want and go, I mean.
Okay, but can we do it now?
I have to look at my dates to be honest with you.
But we. I'm sorry, this that this whole topic isn't on the agenda.
Yeah, the binding, you know, it's not on the agenda really.
You're right. Okay, well.
And we don't want to get it.
Where does anyone, where does anyone? What we're saying is give him the opportunity to look for the stuff.
We have, we've used it five or six times for us and he's come to us with the equipment and then it's done in two weeks.
So what's your suggestion?
So my suggestion is, Mark, yes, I would secure uh the the equipment for the summer.
For a month.
For 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 your your month, talk to those people.
If we.
What we need, we need to get the mowing done, we need to get the excavator. If they have some program, that would be ideal.
Yeah.
If not, we need to still look beyond the summer.
I'm sure.
Most of those companies.
Get the summer locked in one way or the other.
Most, most of those companies, when you lease from them for a month, if you wind up buying from them, they turn that money in the lease toward the purchase price, so.
Yeah. That was the question I did ask the uh, if it was seventy percent of your rental fee to go.
Seventy percent of the amount of things.
Right.
Yeah, okay.
Alright, so.
That's meaningful, babe.
So I guess what I was asking was, knowing that. It seems like these machines are.
Turned over.
Getting harder to come by because of a lot of uh machines around and. A lot of these towns are catching on, they're buying them up. The guy, when I talked with him, he said you were on my list to call, he said I I sold several right off recently. And I've got three left. And that's why I was thinking if we're gonna rent one, we should.
So he runs and walks in and he's happy with, like that one last year, oh, that's a beauty. Then we can make, then we can work it forward as far as buying. But you're right, the respect I can open at you, that we need to lock in for the summer cuz we need to.
Right, and it's two different machines, unfortunately.
Unfortunately, the mower.
Mower.
Will be a separate machine and it would be nice if uh if we could get the mower to. Put on that because that would save a lot of money.
Well, this makes sense.
Now, knowing that we're gonna rent the equipment uh to do this work. We aren't getting grant money back for some of the work, so it's a safety.
How long is it going for a week, so we're gonna try to get all those culverts in?
Well, two months would be extremely helpful, uh but you know, we could maybe start with one month. And then uh you know, maybe partway through, if we come to some other decisions. Then we could tell him, this guy, the sales representative from Altip. Would be willing to come and sit with the board or whoever to answer any questions about uh.
Now, the 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 mower is such a machine at forty-five hundred a week, is that what it was?
That's correct, yeah, so.
How much does it cost to buy?
So basically, we were gonna do a week in the early summer, run a week.
Well, how much does it cost to buy?
They're like a hundred and twenty-five.
No, I'm talking about just the mower.
Oh, just the mower attachment to run on the wheel excavator?
Yeah.
Guy, do you recall when we?
I think it was thirty thousand, twenty-five, thirty thousand dollars for the uh.
Right now.
For the uh over the rail mower attachment.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, alright, um.
Okay.
Mark, I I think the select board is in agreement, we need to secure at least a month. Talk to your, talk to the vendor and say your select board is looking at longer or permanent, or you know. Okay?
Yeah, I would.
And just, I'll just get the caller.
At least we better foot it or prevent.
Yes, we need to get the summer plan.
So we'll probably some of our segments of road and culvert replacement. And my next question was the same, knowing that we're uh. Are replacing four nail culverts and bringing them up to standards. Can I uh place an order for culverts uh with the amount of money the town budgeted for culverts?
Didn't we just spend a whole bunch of money to put culverts, didn't we buy a whole bunch of culverts that we have in the inventory?
We have some inventory.
We, we bought fifteen last summer and we put in, half of them went to the storm. Uh let me see, uh some of them went into the storm damaged areas and others were where they had to go for replacements because they were bad.
So some of the inventory was used.
Some, some, and some of them weren't in the grant. So Parker Road culverts were in the grant. Uh we ended up ordering a special culvert for uh upon Pucky Mountain. Um and that fell under the FEMA, so that one gets reimbursed from FEMA. And and the next one down uh is also needed to be replaced. And uh I think that one might fall under a new grant.
No, I'm just, I'm just a little cautious about money because we haven't received anything from FEMA yet. And we've spent eighty thousand dollars more than we've taken in, so that's a.
But if if we do need to, we can, we're not gonna be.
I know that's.
In a situation that we're illegal anyway.
The price is doubled on the culverts.
Yeah. Right.
And the availability, I already had it this year, but last year we're eight, nine weeks out on ordering culverts. And that's the only reason I brought the topic up.
Yeah.
So yeah.
Yes.
The sooner we can place an order, maybe they'll be here at the time.
That you need any news here.
Alright, and you said twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-five, we have to have all this road segments done, so that's what we're, we're gonna need, Stan?
So when you're thinking of bringing this issue up tonight. I assume that you're looking at what you have for a goal to accomplish in terms of numbers to replace. And you've looked at numbers we have in inventory at the shed. What what number are you looking at and then you looked at the size you're gonna need and priced them out, so you have a number you can offer?
I've talked with Archie and we do have a budget number. Uh four culverts each year. I'm not sure what that number is.
I need to bring my book with me.
And the 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 storm and the replacement of culverts, is that gonna increase or decrease the number that you're gonna come up with in the open expense? Or anticipated expense?
I'm not sure if I got your question, but.
I would just answer anything you think I missed and that would be good.
I think that. We're always gonna need to upgrade the rusted out culverts. We plan to do at least a minimum five sites a year.
Okay.
And um to bring them up to standards and it's just like that culvert inventory map. Um there's always, like this year, when spring that year, one on the Parker Road that has not been replaced is a hole in the road. And so that one is next on site, one at the top of Whitney Hill. Uh completely froze up during the winter, it's an underside metal. And the cross has lifted it so the water couldn't go through it fully. And it froze and went over the road to the winning one, so that one's on the site to be replaced. Then uh Archie Clark did a job the other day and he said Mark Pickering was on site uh from Bee Trains. And Mark encouraged him, this is after our meeting with Megan. He encouraged us to uh apply for a structured grant. The state now has a a new structured grant, certain amount of monies. Uh certain qualifications for class two, three roads. And Archie, we we talked about which site we thought would uh benefit this year if we got it. It may, you may not get it, it depends on how many apply and how much money that has left available. And we were thinking out of Ellen railroad where I talked about a sinkhole in the road out by Mr. Horton's. Um we thought that might be a good one to be replaced with a larger plastic culvert. And it would be three feet or under thirty inches.
You're talking about that point just before Jean's house.
Yeah, that corner.
Right.
And so that grant would cover that one. So knowing that the culverts will never go to waste, if if we can afford them. Uh it's just a matter of when the time is ready to to fit them in, so.
Well, yes, good answer.
Knowing uh I could use them all up this summer or we could always keep a few for emergencies. But I understand you did some money, you know.
Yeah, I just, I I guess I'm sitting here and I'm, I I just, excuse my stupidity, I just don't know how many you're looking for and roughly what they're gonna come up with.
Culverts.
I I guess sitting as a as a citizen listening perhaps, I have another question.
And and in past years, we knew what the budget was and we ordered that amount of culverts and then we used them all up.
Right.
And the next year, we we spent that budget money again and used them all up.
Mm-hmm.
And then because of the flood, last year, we didn't get to install all of the inventory that we had. So we do have, I think, six or seven single culverts there and a lot of sites take two or sometimes three.
Discuss a lot, yeah.
Whatever you have, it all depends on the roadway.
So how many you gonna order?
Um I was gonna look at the budget and get it.
I can.
I know that we need at least two, three footers uh to go on Bucky Mountain. And if we're gonna do the uh the one Archie and I talked about on Ellenware, those could be anywhere from two foot to three foot. It probably should have a hydraulic stud done first, but. Um right now, the existing is a stone culvert. And it's got a piece of metal stuffed up into it.
Oh, I know exactly which one you're talking about, yeah.
It's like two foot. So um so there there's a, and then I got the eighteen inch one is one on um Whitney Hill. I'd probably take two. The one on Parker Road could possibly take two. Um I've got five at the top of Cutney Mountain that need upgrading. They're metal and rusted.
So.
Wow, okay.
So so they go quickly and and you never know when one's gonna, you know.
Guess so.
Collapse.
Definitely collapse, uh you know, we had a couple on Athens Road that a hole appeared in the stream and we had to put uh.
Do we have a lot less that are steel?
We do have quite a few left.
So it sounds like there's twelve, not knowing what your inventory is back in. And you're basically looking for permission permission from us for you to check to.
Yeah, and.
With the guy and find out how many we can afford and find.
Anybody can do like half an order, you know, half that budget. Just so we have them.
Cause you already have the seven or whatever sitting.
Yes, yeah.
I have no problem if the quantity is there.
And I was, anytime, anytime that uh we're doing a narrow section of road and I cut one in half, I save them there for the next time that that half of one or a quarter of one or two thirds of one always comes in handy on the next site, so.
So we need to vote then?
I we don't, no, we don't need to vote for my road, this is that's normal maintenance work and supplies, so.
I don't know.
Okay.
Uh.
Also knowing that all these other towns are doing the same thing, they're they're gonna be upgrading their rusted out culverts and stone lining their ditches to meet
And everybody's lining it up.
The same.
The requirement, so.
Same requirement.
So. So we need to get them ordered so we're in line. Like everything else, the price has gone up and the the uh availabilities.
On demand, supply and demand, price goes up, this is awesome.
Um so so how how should we close this this discussion up? Should Mark, should we ask Mark to check with Guy as far as what's left in the and then order which fifty percent or sixty percent of what what the budget is at this time?
Right.
That sounds good.
Is that okay? Alright, so work with Guy and then if he wanted to shoot me a text, I'll email the select board what the what you all have to, what what you're ordering so that we know that we're what we're expending. Um the other thing I wanted to ask you is, is Archie completing the structures grant for, you mentioned, is Archie going to be doing that or does he expect somebody else to do this?
He was gonna email Stan and.
I wanna be sure everybody's coordinated that, you know, what he's.
Yeah, and and this has to be, the application has to be in by the fifteenth of May.
I know, I know, so yes.
So and this is something I didn't know about when Maggie was here, I and I did have this letter right here.
That's only a week.
That I'd like.
This.
Uh we're gonna look at this here. This is a structured grant and I'm not sure, I don't believe it's talking about the same one that Archie did.
No.
Because this is bridge, bridge structures uh twenty feet longer than our town and um
Same.
I really don't see us getting, you know, money for any of those. It it lists the two and it calls them in good shape, you know, one down here, actually one right here outside the office. And the next one is down near Capuchin Lane and uh you know, they want to buy.
These grants, are they matching grants or do we have to, does the town have to?
I think coming from the state, these are definitely the uh the match.
This came back, yeah.
Okay.
I don't know if it's eighty, twenty or what that is, but.
Yeah.
Can I make a copy?
You sure can, I was in hopes that uh.
Is that the letter from the Wyndham Regional?
Yeah, just submit the petition by May ninth.
Yeah.
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 I will say, I'll be glad to support the highway department in any way possible.
Okay.
There's a deadline, I'll do my best to get it there and let you know and Archie. As long as I'm aware of it and I get the paperwork in time and I'm doing one.
Yeah, stuff like this, you know, Ruth said it earlier, you read through it once and then you start over and read.
Yeah.
And for most people, the second time you might get it instead of paying for your tool.
You tell it.
Also, I appreciate uh you guys and they will put on that stuff.
I do wanna make note that I found uh the Vermont Municipal Equipment Show in Field Day in Barry, Vermont will be held on my birthday, May eleventh. Um and if you, so it's a registration deadline of April fifteenth. If you're interested in registering, to go up there and see that. Would you like this, Mark? If you're interested?
Yeah, I hope people look at that, see what the.
I've been on the rest of the half of the people putting it on to advise you that your birthday cake will be there.
Oh, good.
Why would you know?
Okay, anything else?
Yeah, you know, I covered them all, I don't know. I I just wanted to keep it short, but I have a question on the RFP for paving and uh.
Which one?
Uh not the FEMA stuff, but out by the the river.
Yeah.
And I wanted, I got thinking about it today and I was gonna call the Jeff Marsden, the guy that did the estimating from basins on our paving. And um we mentioned grinding down a layer of the rough pavement out by the river and then adding uh a layer of new pavement, two and a half inches.
Are you talking about, excuse me, I flew one up, over Ned Duttons?
Yes. Yeah, that whole strip along the river there and around the corner by now.
Yeah, yeah. Mm-hmm.
Uh it was fifteen hundred and seventy-five feet.
Uh-huh.
Um now we talked about having, getting an RFP or grinding it.
Yeah.
And then it's such a big for paving. And I I have big feelings about the grinding. Um I feel like you're gonna grind it, this is my personal opinion. If you're grinding down two and a half inches and you've got all these cracks there, you're not completely getting rid of all the cracks. So when you, I've noticed on all our paving that's taking place over the years, only one year goes by and those old cracks underneath the surface open up to new pavement. And I guess it's the dry peat and the pressure, so so I'm wondering if uh are we wasting money by grinding it and taking it away because we're just paving over the lower cracks underneath?
So it says here, the area shall be milled to a depth of one and a half inches and then repaved two inches thick.
Right.
So it's only a half inch higher than it was before, but.
Which saves the town a little money because you don't have to fill the shoulders back up for that much more gravel.
Ah, okay.
So that is one benefit to doing it that way.
So when they say, when you say grind, it's milling, is that is that what?
Right, milling it like we did the other in the hill road.
So you're asking if we should eliminate the milling procedure?
And and go thicker on the pavement? The money we would have spent in grinding would have paid it. And I wanted to ask the the representative his opinion, how he feels on.
Okay.
So if I can call that tomorrow and get special opinion. I I felt like if you could grind it and leave that old material in place, leave it there and then maybe reshape it and roll it and pack it and then pave on top of it. You're adding a little bit of height, but you're not right on the crack. You've got a little cushy layer that's not uh and I don't know.
Cause you can't get rid of the crack without completely excavating it.
That's my feeling, you know.
That's what Joe Dutton was talking about seven years ago.
Yeah.
That was a major event.
Yeah, I mean, I don't really have the right span of of paving, but. So I just wanted to bring that up.
Alright, go ahead, Stan.
Yeah, uh I, when my wife came up Reservoir for a walk from my house here to the town office to say hello to Guy, I went to his house last Saturday and used the bathroom, of course. Um and I I noticed that the cracks from where the decycled man was, yeah, to the town office are filled with this material.
Right.
Which has apparently done a pretty decent job of keeping that from splitting.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right.
Uh there's a need for more to be done now because it's some of the cracks have been extended from the original.
Right.
But it's done a great job of keeping the old road. Is that a process that can be used once they take off that layer? To fill in the crack? And and then just fill back over and it won't go down into the crack that isn't there anymore?
Yeah, I I haven't heard of it ever being done that way, maybe they do, but I think it's more for on top when you can't do more than a three quarter inch gap.
Okay.
Depth.
Oh, okay, okay.
Uh but if you can do anything whiteness um three quarter inch gap, it seals it, keeps the water from going through and then freezing under, anything that gets through freezes and actually breaks nothing, so.
So the process that you just described, the modified one, will that eliminate the cracks or reduce the non-cracks underneath?
I feel like it would, but that's just, I'm not a professional with the paving, so I wanted to ask uh.
I'll answer Dot's question about how I would feel about it or how we feel about it. If that's doable, I would be in favor of that.
Okay.
We have to rewrite the the RFP and we wouldn't be able to approve it tonight, but we could approve it in two weeks to go out immediately.
Yeah. Well, do you wanna, were you gonna mail that out? Uh tomorrow or?
Well, well, we have to come up with the correct wording and you're gonna check with your.
Yeah. I'll call him tomorrow. I should be able to find that out tomorrow.
Okay. Alright, and then we can.
If it's a, if it sounds like my idea means anything, I'll I'll get right to you immediately.
It may not be, it may not be possible.
Right, yeah, it may not.
May not be a thing that pavers too.
No, no, they do do this. Um back in the mid eighties, um uh Wickham Paving did group theory right through the town of Jamaica right up to Mount Lees. And I know somebody that personally worked here and what they did was they dumped gravel on top of the old pavement. And they had this machine that came in and rode it till the new gravel with the pavement. They did like a ten inch grind.
Wow.
Then they rolled it out, you know, shaped it with a grader, rolled it with the uh rolling machine.
It heavy.
And then they paved two layers on top.
Wow.
And then same time, you replaced all the culverts the whole way.
Mm-hmm.
Culverts.
Alright, in the in the uh trying to get things to move on a little bit, I'm gonna suggest that you make your phone call contacts and let us know what it is. We'll have to approve this bid at the next meeting now.
Yeah. I'll let you know tomorrow. Yeah.
Cause we won't be able to vote without having the correct words for for the request for proposal for the milling of the section by uh the sixteen seventy-five foot section.
Okay.
So we're gonna table this RFP at this time, is that okay with you?
Yeah.
Alright, so then we have the second RFP, which is the RFP that deals with the uh Putney Mountain washout. And as you know, the damage, I'll pass this around, though those are the damage at the bridge by Amadon's corner.
Oh, yeah.
And then up where we extended the pavement and it got washed out. So that bid, it says the town of Brooklyn is requesting bids for the blacktop repairs on Putney Mountain Road caused by the July, and I think we're gonna, I noted to Stan that we have to change this to say the July twenty-nine thirty storm. Uh flooding, the damage there is to include grassy bridge and the intersection of Putney Mountain and grassy roses. Areas eight by twenty-five shall be cold cold plain to a depth of two inches and then repaved. That's the same thing though.
Yeah, that would be new, you know.
Okay.
Because the pavement is almost completely gone.
Yes.
They're just gonna remove the damage.
What? Stuff, okay.
Towards to a certain place and then it'll be all new.
Okay.
No, nothing underneath, but a new base of gravel and then two layers of pavement.
Okay, and then it says at the washout areas approximately one mile up on Putney Mountain Road, these areas will include a road that's your four inches with a width and two hundred and sixty feet in length. The existing blacktop shall be saw cut, removed and properly disposed of, next to it again to a depth of four feet. Four inches compacted and replaced with four inches of new blacktop, two and a half inch base and a one and a half inch top. The other area is to be removed and properly disposed of approximately ten by eighty of existing blacktop and then to be rebrayed by the town to proper elevation. Area to be compacted and then placed two and a half inches of base and one and a half of top blacktop. Any questions about the scope of work should contact you. Contractor to be responsible for traffic control and maintaining one lane of traffic. The project must be completed by September first, twenty twenty-two. New state anticipated start date. Current working's compensation and liability uh. We we don't have to have them do the liability insurance, doesn't it have to be included with the bid I have found out? Because it means nothing when they include it with the bid. When someone gets a bid, then they have to contact their insurance company to put the town in a.
As a lost payee.
As a lost payee, but they won't put the town as a lost payee if they don't have a bid. So we don't no longer have to say, will be requi, general liability will be required, but not, does not have to be sent in with the bid because again, the lost payee stuff.
Well, that makes a lot of sense.
Okay, the town reserves the right to reject any and all bids and accept a bid most variable to the town if the bids are due April twentieth at six P M to uh to be open at a regular select word meeting. Maybe I can add that to it as well, but is that okay with you, that that word, we just have to do a couple of changes, the date change?
Consider.
Yeah. Sure.
And my other question is to the select board, maybe we won't change it at this time, but um why do we not accept fax or email bids?
Hmm. Because back in nineteen twenty, we didn't. I we had to change it since we do it.
Right, is there any legal line with?
It's always, it's always there received before meeting.
Yeah.
The the time.
Yeah.
What's your, what's your opinion?
Well, the fax is fine. The email uh leaves a little bit to be considered because emails, different servers are slower than others. Faxes are as a rule pretty well, um you know, that's that's reliable.
I can see, at least one step changed, the fax can be faxed to such and such a number, is that okay with us?
Yeah, and I will, I will also call V L C T to see if there is some reason why that, you know, if it's a signature something or whatever, uh I'll just, if you would write that down, Gwen, I'll call V L C T and see
Right.
if we can fax, email or whatever it is and.
I can understand even skipping the email, but faxing, people should be able to fax it at least electronically in this day and age. I just know that the painter then you're, then spent thirty dollars to to express mail something to us for his bid because he couldn't email it or fax it, he told you.
Really?
There may be, there may be some reason, but I'll I'll find out.
David.
Good.
Even even if, you know, when we do letters of potential samples of documents, I think in one case, when David and I were going back and forth, he had put in a security password on the document. And he was the creator of it, so if they, V L C T allowed.
Here was another layer.
Allowed uh emailing of it with a security code or a security name being phoned into the recipient cover V L C T's guidelines in terms of security, whatever.
Yeah.
Cause the only person's gonna open it is the one who made or gave the number for the secret security.
I'll find out from.
Yeah, that's.
Of course, it's on it.
Yeah.
Yeah, because it's classified as a sealed bid, so maybe we'll figure one over the internet.
Yeah, there may be a valid reason, you know, like like Mark was just saying.
Alright, I'll check that, it will will, but I'm gonna move on to get this uh.
An email, everybody can read an email, everybody can read a fax, so there may be a reason for it, but I'm gonna find out tomorrow and then I'll report back to you folks.
Alright, perfect, thanks Guy, that would be great, much appreciated. Alright, so um
Yeah.
I'm going to make a motion that we approve the request for proposal with some minor editing, including the date of the flood and that the bid will be opened at a regular select word meeting on April twentieth. Is that enough time? That was the other thing. Do people have enough time to get their bid to us? Should we say May fourth?
I would do May fourth because right now everybody is so wicked busy.
Yeah.
Everybody's running around in spring, you know, um.
Oh.
And with the mail being like it is.
Right, I mean, they can, actually they can, you know, get it to us by April thirtieth and we can review it at the May fourth meeting.
Yeah.
So.
Let me have a minute.
Yes, all right, I'm gonna make a motion that we approve the request for proposal with minor editing for the date. Um and we will review whether it can be faxed or emailed and that the bid should be received by town by April thirtieth uh to be opened by May fourth. May I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Stan, any discussion? You mean, not all those are in favor of approving the RFP for this, uh this is the FEMA work, uh signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? I will send a copy to Mel too when I.
And I will also let you know tomorrow what the response is from V L C T.
Thank you, yes sir. Okay, so it's four thousand, six thousand dollars.
It's the total budget even now.
Yes, so I'm guessing if you could try to stay around four thousand, something like that and then.
Yeah. Four, just make sure we have.
Right, if you have to go forty-five hundred or whatever.
Yeah, and then if things are going good, we'll talk it over and.
Okay.
You know, using the.
Right. Okay, so this has to be. All right, very good, um, I'm gonna try to move on here.
That, excuse me, that four thousand dollars, is that going for the twenty-two, twenty-three budget or the twenty-twenty-one budget um?
Six thousand dollars is budgeted, oh, that's for next year's.
Forty, that's twenty.
Yeah.
So forty-five hundred was.
What we have budgeted for, so maybe you wanna look at thirty-five, three thousand thirty-five, yeah, thank you.
So.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll I'll send you guys state some uh there now.
You see, you can get like three culverts.
Yeah, I'm.
Yeah, that's.
You know, but you know, that's the way things are going that that way here in summer.
Yeah.
Uh you know, if we work on that road or.
Yeah.
There's a lot to do this summer, so.
Okay.
But I just didn't wanna get caught short.
All right, thanks for, yep. All right, so we're back to goods, review it, RFP, RFP, uh the culvert on Holland Hill Road, just um over on Holland Hill Road, I have some pictures of it when we went there. Uh this is Holland Hill, here's the culvert, it's leaf, sorry, leaf filled. Uh it drains down into the, here is the input hole, as you can see, a lot of debris builds up into the input hole. It goes under the road and then it comes out on the other side. And the problem with this culvert, as you can see, is that they're, they have to clean out all of this debris uh that gets pushed through the culvert. And you can see how much debris by comparing it to the size of Mark standing next to it. When Mark and I went up there, he felt that this culvert would be be would work better if it were started higher on the mountain and had a straighter angle to the outlet side, correct?
Right, yeah.
Now, according to notes, did Megan or somebody recommend that we check with Putney to see if they will do that repair?
Um yes, uh.
So tell us a little bit about that.
Jeff knew to uh on on the phone, uh and Jeff, he uh was up on the mountain speaking with Putney's uh town road supervisor and they have a lot of uh grant work to do as well as foot repair to do in that same road, Holland Hill Road. A lot of it was destroyed and empty putback, so they're finishing up a lot of work up there on Holland Hill. And as some of that work, it's gonna be stone line ridges and upgrading culverts and uh so they're gonna have all their machinery within half a mile uh to the area. So Jeff thought maybe it might benefit us to coordinate with Putney to uh see if they could fit the work in while they were up there.
And how does that work with payment of the cost to do that project?
Other years that we had a similar situation, uh we paid for all the supplies and here. And they charged us labor, I don't know if Guy remembers that.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
That was area excavating, did some work in that area for us and that's how it was.
Before we develop a formal request, should the Putney Select Board or vote for this possibility? Could you reach out and talk to, do you do you know them well enough to call them?
Well. I I do know him through the meetings.
Yeah.
Uh Jeff is planning to meet with us at some point and uh so he's gonna talk about this as a potential grant, one of their grants. And if so, we'll lead to uh come up with estimates for everything.
Okay. Okay.
And if Putney's in agreement to do the work after we come up with the uh amounts, uh maybe we can work that deal with them.
All right, so we need to do, Jeff needs to do some work with us to come up with estimates and before we approach.
Yeah, I mean, if Stan wants to, you know, help me out with that uh and and with the application to get the numbers, there probably are two beyond that as well.
Okay.
A lot of guy, but um yeah, so I was assuming that could be one of the grant applications here.
Okay. Um.
It does fall under a set of the five priority uh that needs to be done, so.
All right, just wanna make point because we're gonna move on, I know the meeting is gonna run a little long here, but just wanna make point that I have some information about from Jeff Nugent about towns sharing equipment and examples of agreements, memorandums of understanding between uh compa- uh between towns that may collaborate on buying equipment, for example, hydroseeder pro- programs and that. So again, as as we talked about equipment, you know, sometimes you can sh- share services occasionally.
Yeah, Mike Mike Fontaine from town of Euphrates mentioned that they were gonna be sharing the hydroseeder with Redover.
Right, yeah.
Right, and so they do, they've already had some a memorandum of agreements that are available for for you here, this is a little out of county, but um they talk about.
Yeah, the the town of Athens is also stock of that, you know, sharing something down the road.
They do that. Yeah.
And I know that uh in the past uh several years, um Newthing has come over with their liquid fluoride. Once we get our road treat, they'll, if you call them, they'll come over, use their fluoride and they bill us.
Right.
Yeah, so that's a shared uh.
Shared service.
Service and you know, I almost think it do the reef or if they, I don't know if they'd be up to it, but we could almost share with them, maybe them come over and do theirs or we, right, did some then or.
Geez, and you.
But that's just.
Yeah, yeah, that's up here, right, right now it's, we have the grant, if we can buy it, we'll buy something for for us.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah.
Um is there anything else for culverts, we're gonna move on to the highway grant section?
No. No, for.
All right, thanks. Sam's salt shed update discussion and I do wanna point out, if you want these, I have copies of the advertising invoices and the classified ads that were one for your for things like that.
Great, I would very much appreciate the top, I have the one from Rutland that you sent along.
Okay.
It was a tear sheet for the former, did not have a dollar amount on the copy that I got. So if they can have anything for that one, I'll then will send it along to Margot along with the Rutland one. Just she can include it in our grant cost, uh disbursements, et cetera, et cetera.
All right, uh you got the floor, Mr. Noga?
Okay, uh there's uh not much further to report, well, I, um first one, we can use ARCA for much. Uh the state, D Trans said no, Margot saw a copy and he knows it came back and D Trans emailed Kate Buckley at V L C T.
A copy.
I'm sorry.
She needs a copy, then she can have that.
Okay, uh so so um uh I think within twenty-four hours, Kate Buckley had emailed back, Margot, myself, the fellow from D Trans that was involved in the transaction, who said you could not use the ARCA money. And they cited the specific federal guideline, uh et cetera, so we can use, we can use that, as you've heard and learned of. Uh which is a wa- a a godsend for us at this point in time. Uh let's see, grant planning, I we met with uh, well, you've already heard stuff about coming down like for one way or another, but um uh three grants that we have right now are a hundred eighty-eight thousand dollar grant uh from one division of D Trans. We have a hundred nine thousand six hundred dollar grant, that's a transitional grant from D Trans, but a different department. So we're uh uh basically at this point waiting for regarding the second grant for one oh nine six for it to work its way through D Trans. Uh the, it's apparently the D Trans municipal highway, no. It's working its way through D Trans because they have to formally amend the original grant for the seventy-three six, seventy-three thousand six hundred dollars, adding thirty-six thousand dollars and it has to be done in a formal process for the grant. Chris Hunt of D Trans is responsible for sending or requesting that agreement, amendment. Uh it then is gonna reach a young lady or a person by the name of Tricia Schreiner, who will send a copy of the town, uh send a copy of the amendment to the town to Dot's attention. And that should be coming within the next two to three weeks. So we need to keep our mind open and when they said send, I have no idea whether that's email or hard copy. So I will inquire about that, I made myself a note, so we know where and how to look for it. Just, okay, and then the, uh so that's, that's the situation on that second grant. Uh and I think in the minutes, there was reference to a thirty-six thousand dollar grant. That was another grant that was had been, had been applied for separately from another source of grants from D Trans. Uh and when I was trying to sort out whether the increase in thirty-six thousand dollars in the second grant for the sand and salt shed, if that thirty-six was that exact increase or the thirty-six thousand was in fact a separate grant, uh my initial inquiry produced results and answers that didn't add up. And finally, someone from D Trans who got a copy of what was going on between me and someone else saw it and said, oh, that was a separate grant for thirty-six thousand dollars, it's not the thirty-six thousand that was added to the second grant.
So it's a hundred and forty-five thousand.
So, so uh David, when he became aware of the upgrade rate from seventy-three six to one oh nine six, he emailed me saying we probably don't need that additional thirty-six thousand dollars and we probably ought to take action to cancel it, so I put into place the action to cancel it. I looked at it, I agreed, it sounded like the thing to do, uh and so I asked them to cancel it and they've done that. So there's not, that thirty-six thousand increase was because there was just simply extra money and D Trans decided to increase many of the grants around the state, if not all of them, by adding additional money.
Yes, why would we give, why would we not accept grant money for this project?
Well.
Could then it mistake I made, I don't know, I just thought that, you know, I I just didn't think it would.
The original grant was two thirty-five, then they added another hundred and nine.
Yeah.
And then the thirty-six.
Well, the the grant itself is one eighty-eight for the first one, predicated on an expense of two, two hundred and ninety-eight.
Right, yeah, based on two thirty-five, yeah, eighty, okay. So the project itself was two hundred thirty-five thousand, that was the project.
Yeah.
And now they're adding another hundred and nine thousand dollar grant money.
One nine six, yeah.
Okay, and then there was a thirty-six on top of that.
Yeah, that was, that was asked for before we knew the thirty-six was being added on to the second grant.
That we could have.
Unfortunately, the two numbers, the thirty-six, two thirty-six thousand dollar grants, so we kept one and we canceled the other, only what we, wouldn't they have, the money, yeah.
Right.
Well, we still have to match it by twenty percent, each each one of these grants was still on a hook for twenty percent. And we have this sort of assumption.
Well, so are you, are you indicating that you'd rather have it go back and re-initiated if I can?
Oh well, I I don't know, I just, it's it's, we don't know how much the bids are gonna come back and whether we, you can afford the project even with all this grant money, who knows?
So I guess.
I guess I'm just trying to de- to determine what the final number is.
We don't, it's too late to put out the bid to.
No, no, what we have in the copper for the the bid, I'm sorry, for the grant itself. So we had a hundred eighty-eight, then a hundred and nine, I'm sorry, yeah, a hundred eighty-eight, a hundred.
Two hundred ninety-seven thousand six hundred dollars.
A hundred eighty-eight.
Two hundred ninety-seven, six hundred.
That's counting a hundred and nine and thirty-six.
No.
It's counted as a hundred nine and one eighty-eight.
A hundred nine and thirty-six. Okay, all right, so that's.
So we have two hundred ninety-seven thousand, if the.
Two hundred ninety-seven thousand, which we have to match twenty percent.
Two hundred ninety-seven. And we have to pay for anything above that if the bids come in for, let's say the.
Yeah. Right.
We're not paying twenty percent of two ninety-seven, we're paying twenty percent of the total anticipated cost of roughly three hundred and seventy-three thousand. So there's a significant amount of money that uh needs to come up with, we need to come up with somewhere around seventy-three thousand dollars.
Yeah, seventy, seventy eighty thousand dollars, that's all said and done.
Yeah. Yeah.
I I, to be honest, I don't think that's a real big sell for the town, but that's just my opinion.
Yeah. Let's not worry about it.
All right, yeah, give us one second.
That's a lot.
We can't, all right, well, all right, go ahead, Stan.
So, so that's where we are on that, so the guess, the question is, I have no problem saying I made a mistake and uh we want thirty-six thousand dollars more in grants, if you would like me to do that.
If, should we, if we, if we got a grant, see if they would, if we can cut off another thirty-six thousand dollars over what we're gonna have to owe. If we don't use the grant, we give it back, but we, right?
That's true.
If we don't, if we decide not to go, we give, we just.
Give it back?
Give it back, we don't accept it.
Was one of those grants like an inflation cost to help with?
Name, well, not to that.
I almost said maybe a cost or something like that.
Well, there was not one, there was a ten percent inflation that was built in for the overall anticipated cost, because the anticipated cost, right?
Right, cuz there might be.
Uh and and the reason that we went for the additional thirty-six was because when David added the ninety-three seven or seventy-three six and the one eighty-eight, the number of shortfall was significant and he felt that the thirty-six thousand would get us to a level where we'd be somewhat comfortable. So lo and behold, we get this letter out of the blue saying your grant has been increased by thirty-six thousand dollars from, you know, from this number to one oh nine six. And and was that at that point that I had no idea how many grants we had at the time, but but I but I got a communication
Yeah.
because they sent it to David not knowing that there was a change.
Right.
And his comment to me was, you know, you, we ought to cancel that because we now have the thirty-six thousand that I went and got for a grant for before, we don't need it. But I didn't think, I had enough, I guess, to say, oh, we could probably use as many grants as we could get. Uh so, you know, I did get a notice about two and a half, three weeks ago that they did in fact cancel it, which means the money is there and if it's not been spent or provided elsewhere, I have no problem saying I goofed and the board has asked me to to see if that's still a bid.
Yeah, it's been confusing all along.
It's very.
I'm sure that a lot of people have stepped down and more and stepped down.
Yeah, yeah, but but you know, I, as I'm sitting here saying, you fool, why didn't you ask the board what they wanted to do, rather than just go ahead and and do something, so I I feel terrible that I did that and uh so I'm gonna do anything I can to fix it, you know?
Yeah. And did we hear that Newthing is uh, they're, they haven't put their bid out yet or did they put their?
Nope, they have not because they're behind, they're further behind the wheel.
Okay.
Uh so uh.
I just wondered if there was information there yet to pull together.
Okay.
Uh let's see. All right, uh there, you, the um RFP response and bid for the onsite inspector inspector is due tomorrow uh to Margot. And I think Margot uh indicated.
It was the eleven, equal eleven or two.
Well, the the copy that I looked at this afternoon, must dates have changed, that she sent to us originally and maybe she has changed it, if it is the eleven. Uh the the uh the document that I said I read this afternoon indicated on that, maybe a week older, indicated that the actual award would be made in six weeks from the receipt of the bid, so.
Okay, I I'm thinking maybe it's the inspector, the the inspector bid is due the eleven, never mind.
Uh well, that's the one I'm talking about, the bid is due, the doc, again, the document I looked at. I didn't, well, I got too many too many directories, I got a directory, a file here and one of these, it has a copy of the RFP.
I bet you.
And they are the most recent RFP.
Yeah.
Uh and 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 it's because we didn't do it on a Monday, I took the weekend and Monday. Actually read all the documents, I understood them, know what questions even asked. It might be that she did in fact delay it three days, so it'll be eleven. I I don't know, I can check the most decent.
I think that's what I put in my account.
Okay, then you're probably right. Uh okay, so let's see, on the list here things, what else? Uh there is a process whereby uh Jeff Nugent has advised us that. Uh m- many of that grants that are being passed through Wyndham Regional um. Wyndham Regional is backing out of uh follow up on some of these, they're gonna offer general guidance. And instead of uh Wyndham Regional signing off on saying telling us that it's okay. They're gonna expect that the town now does that. Uh so there's a little bit of a a change there, I I was doing a number of things today and unfortunately I did not get to that one before. I have.
I can understand.
So uh so that's uh that's the that's the scenario on that. Um so there is there is a change and uh I I I wish I could summarize it for you right now at quarter or nine. Uh but I I I actually can't remember from the top of my head. So we go down to number four here, discussion about available free money, up to ten thousand dollars in equipment. This was taken from the um. Uh DLCT passive meeting earlier this week, I think it was Tuesday, Monday or Tuesday. And I was writing and so forth and um. Apparently, the road supervisor for New Thing asked Jeff Nugent at WRC, Wyndham Regional Commission, if there is such a grant that needs a lawyer. So Jeff emailed me this morning and said, I heard you were talking about a ten thousand dollar free money grant. And he said, could you tell me more about it? And I couldn't, because that's all I remembered was the the context that was presented in the meeting. Uh and I might interject, I'm gonna look tomorrow for the recording of that meeting and reveal it.
It's not this, is it?
No.
Okay, cause I had ten thousand dollars on it too and I thought, you know.
You know, it's actually in there uh under a a diff uh uh under another heading and I did find it today. And it's an outdated policy, it states the dollar amount, I think it's eight thousand. They apparently increased it, but the the actual agreement or award documentation hasn't yet increased it to the ten thousand dollar number. And it is not free, it's not string free, it is primarily for health and safety issues and equipment. Not all highway equipment, reflective vests, uh anything as a piece of equipment that would add to safety as an attachment. Um uh there are a number of things, I I have it on my hard drive. I didn't print it out to bring it here today, but I will send it to you tomorrow. So if there there isn't that golden pot of ten thousand dollars that's hoping we we have, so my apologies for that, I sent. Jeff, I think not a a copy of the agreement, I didn't send it to everybody else at the uh cause we had enough coming.
Was that through Wyndham Regional or was that through the insurance company?
No, it's through the in passive, passive as a program.
Right, and we talked about that years ago when the gentleman was here. Uh and it was basically, as you said, it was more geared toward equipment and safety equipment versus uh not street equipment, uh if you know what I mean.
Right.
Like reflectors and so forth.
Yeah, backup cameras and and all kinds of stuff like that, if you had a a list.
Yes, exactly. Right.
Which would be good if if it is available.
Yeah.
For road signage or emergency situations.
Yeah.
I didn't know it existed and I was all excited until I until I found out this money that it's there's a little more to it, but it's money that's still available.
Yeah, well.
Okay, and lastly, number five, so my apologies for getting excitement going about that. Uh number five, the MRGP grant fee, when we had our meeting. Last week or.
Yeah, last Tuesday or Wednesday.
Megan Grant, she mentioned that we were showing up on the delinquency list. Of the MRGP grant program because we hadn't paid our fee back.
Well, it was a four hundred dollars for the application, then two hundred fifty every year or two hundred forty every year that we had to pay. But I don't think we ever got invoiced for it.
Cause she asked her to invoice us again.
She claimed. She claimed that the invoice was sent to our town offices in February of this year. I do, I think vaguely recall seeing it and I will go back in my emails to see if I can prove it. And I can ask her to send a copy of what she sent out to us as well. But irrespective of my understanding that we are involved and have paid the original four hundred dollar fee. This is simply a paying the annual fee of two hundred dollars.
So we could, if if we could get a copy of that and give it to the to to our uh uh treasury and maybe get that ready for the house payable next next month. Next meeting, that would be great because I I hate to be delinquent for two hundred dollars on this Helen Grant, so.
Exactly.
But you said in February, what's the date that that came?
Uh she didn't provide us, if she did, I don't remember it.
Okay.
I do have notes from that day, but I I don't have those right in front of me at the moment.
I'll I'll see if I can find it by email search, but I I can't see.
Okay, yeah, yeah, and it it sounds like it it came from someone over MRGP.
It came by snail?
Uh well, you were there, I I can't remember what she said.
Yeah, I I thought it was mailed and if it was mailed, you know, anything could happen with the mail, you know.
Yeah.
I I don't recall seeing it, but it doesn't need to be mailed.
Now, I I I'm thinking that I saw something about an annual feedback about that time and just that since it wasn't at that time directly involving me, I. So I didn't pay any attention.
We just have to, we'll have to search for it and see if something.
Uh but maybe I'll do whatever I can to help everyone else to locate it. And if it means getting another copy from from uh Megan and I.
That would probably be the easiest way.
Yeah, yeah, and that's all I have to offer.
Okay, Mr. Mr. Tanza, you're up.
Um. The town office has been extremely busy with dog licensing and so forth, we've now registered, I think, ninety six dogs. And um. There's been a a little bit of activity in in um some refinancing. Uh the town has been busy, it's also tax season and many, many inquiries in regards to what people have paid for their taxes and how much they owe and so forth. So it's been busy. Um but we're on top of it and everything's good, so. I gave you a copy of the, well, I gave you the last one on Saturday, Saturday we here, we were here until, I was here until four o'clock. Uh Gwen left around one or two, but we gave everybody the opportunity.
We did.
To to register their dogs and I'm just hoping that the few that are left out there, maybe twenty, uh will respond and that. You know, we don't have, we didn't have a rabies clinic this year because of the scare of COVID. But the Humane Society has one every Friday, I'm sorry, the first Friday of each month. And there are different places in town that you could find a place to have your dog vaccinated, so uh that should not be an excuse, um. We're hoping that people will just comply.
Do you know if these people moved or these land holders or renters that the letters were returned?
Um I don't, does it say there was no receptacle, there was no male receptacle?
It says that. Unable to forward, attempt attempted not known, no male receptacle, unable to forward, so.
Right, so that means it, you know, didn't have a mailbox out there or, I'll check, I'll check it out, see what we can do.
Thanks.
And that's pretty much it uh in town court land.
About treasury land?
Treasury, uh we're doing well. Uh initially, we had a number of issues that had to be taken care of. Uh we've pretty much finished that, I'm looking forward to going into just doing regular treasury work rather than, you know. Fixing up some things that had been been pushed aside or not taken care of. But uh we're in good shape and I think uh we will continue to get even better. Uh like I say, I'm more concerned um with the FEMA money, that's a real concern. And I I haven't heard from Mel, I don't know if you've heard from Mel, but the window of opportunity is starting to close. And um I just don't want us to be in a rock and hard fight. In New Thing, um. Melissa is in conversation with Mel every week, so I don't understand what's holding us up.
We started before New Thing did, we started our meetings with Mel before New Thing started the meetings with Mel. We were in contact with Mel weekly when he was focusing on us, so he still, they had a lot on the roads issues that he he did.
Okay.
But I I'm gonna write to Mel anyway, cause of the RFP and the FEMA repairs.
Yeah, okay. So that's my my only question there, um. We've caught up with the bank reps, we've caught up with the end of the month reports, um we're moving in the right direction. And uh we're in relatively good shape, like I say, the the biggest issue is that, you know, we're a small town with limited resources and. The money that we've eaten up in FEMA's, you know, has been concerned.
Bye, uh we have on your list the annual financial ten TA sixty, I need to sign this and have Rebecca sign this.
Yes, uh that's the one that's, yup.
This is the greatest, greatest. Okay, so this is the annual, on the sign, this is the annual financial plan for town highways. Uh TA sixty, which shows the class one, two and three roads, the retreatment bridges, winter maintenance, now winter maintenance. Construction such as, says we, the legislative body of the municipality of Brookline certify that funds raised by municipal taxes are equivalent to or greater than. A sum of at least three hundred dollars per mile for each mile of class one, two and three town highways in the municipality. So based upon your recommendation, I am going to certify by signing and then I will pass this around for others to sign. Our thank you. And today's date is April sixth, two thousand twenty two.
Did you happen to know how she got the number that she came up with? She was deducting certain things.
Right, she she did percentages and so forth and uh based on our budget.
Yeah.
And um she had a a regular formula that she used, I'm saying.
Is is this helpful, Stan, if you wanna see these pages, cause it has more detail on it?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah. I would, I'd like to have a copy of this in future, it's just that I haven't seen how she did it. Excuse my French.
Oh boy.
That's Polish, I'm sorry.
Okay, um as that form comes back and we also have here modified the Brookline policy on roads and bridges to conform to state standards. And select board signed a document, but I don't think we have it.
Let me see which one that is.
Modified the Brookline policy on roads and bridges to conform.
I believe, is that the one where we had to put in the?
This is just my.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I don't have the, I don't have the document.
We had one document where we didn't plug in six inches to the pavement and so forth.
Right. Yeah.
And I thought she was gonna forward that to us, but maybe she didn't.
So this is based upon the meeting that you had with us, that, okay.
No, I didn't. Yes.
Yeah, she needed to think, she needed the actual policy completed, there was blank lines and there were numbers like five, twelve, fifteen, twelve, fifteen, twelve, I forget. Those three lines, the thick depth of the substrate, I guess, needed to be inserted in there. So that we had an official policy that we could then indicate to her was what we were doing. Because it's state of the standards, then we had to provide her with a certificate saying that we are in fact following the standards that we just, you know, that we now have. So she needed to dust it.
No, I thought.
Okay, oh, this is it, okay, so.
Did you do all, you did three pages, right?
I did all those three pages.
Okay, there's four pages, there's uh actually one, two, three, four, five pages, I didn't pass that out.
Okay. Annual financial grant, okay, good, good.
So you guys, that that's fine.
Can I make a copy of this?
Then you can have that.
Oh, thank you. But this is down.
What's your other page?
Alright, so this is ready to be um sent out, I'll leave this out, keep on.
That's number four, I don't know how many pages she's talking about. Oh, this is the issue. But she said it was five pages, that's in the fourth, no, this was on the three, this was three.
It was, the TA sixty, it says two point one on the bottom and then. Has winter expense, non-winter expense page and a signature page, so I guess it's it's one, two, three, four pages. Okay, my mistake. Okay, so uh the Brookline policy, you gonna table that? Right, cause we don't have any topic to start, stop meeting and just start.
Okay, okay, meeting and our workday next week, we could, we could do that.
The number six. Okay.
What, Gwen, could you do me, could you just make a note for that, because I'm gonna look it up.
A note for what?
For the road road and bridge standards.
Alright, I'm gonna move on quickly through my select board chair report. I attended the New Thing Zoom meeting, what they were talking about buying space for a community activity, if they're they're not, they're looking at. Other buildings and they're not looking to combine with Brookline at all, they're looking at villages and stuff in New Thing. Uh ACO, we had a resident report a lost dog and then the dog came home, so I didn't have to do anything on that, that that was good. Uh we did receive in the mail the uh signed amended lease from Suzie Potermash for some of Suzie's little peanuts that came in the mail. Um the Brookline local emergency management plan is due um in May, I will have it finished for and shared before the next meeting. So that we can sign that and get that nailed out. Um Jordan Chafin can no longer represent Brookline, so I'll put a rest uh thing out on the list sir for rescue representation. And um that's all I have at this time, so we'll go now to the building commissioners report, Bruce, thank you, you've been very, very patient.
Don't get used to it.
Okay.
Give him the three minutes he's entitled to.
Okay, go, I'm watching.
I'll go by Mike Wallace's list. Co-encore updated F A M boiler system L S L P. They were there again today for another two, three hours, getting our air handlers fucked and fixed. I'm looking into it, but those SOB air handlers, they're now, well, they're not off, but they were off all last weekend for three days. Because they were running constantly, they were set on a timer from ten to two, and the timer is just fitting, it goes like this. So I got, so I called up Stephanie and it does. It's on the side by bar, no, it's not, I don't know, there. So I called Stephanie and said, I saw, cause I went over there, saw higher and showed them both of them there, that's two people, two hundred and ten dollars. And they were, they were just getting ready to go up into the our our favorite room upstairs and look at that air handle working out the wiring. I think they probably fixed it, I don't, I just don't think they readjusted the timer, because I I called up later, I said, Stephanie? Yeah, it's still blowing, I can see that something, whether it's toys or something blowing the arrow on on the floor over. Which means it should be cutting off after two o'clock in the afternoon. So I went over there before the before the meeting and sure enough, it was still going on, but this time I opened my flashlight. Other than mouse patrol, and went down there and looked at the timer, and as soon as I adjusted, I had shut the breaker off. And as soon as I, as soon as I adjusted the timer to the pro- proper time, would pass the click on the two count, uh two clock part. It would shut off on its own, so basically it runs from ten to two, five days a week, I can set a timer set. But it swings so much, the time is not exactly right all the time, the time of the day. Anyway, I think they fixed it, I also wish I'd go over with Mark, we were planning on a little thing this weekend, so I can do it. Of how to fix that room upstairs, there is a ammonia hole up there, I think you or me, you would maybe guide back when, try to fix that.
Yeah, we taped up everything and.
Well, when you go up the chute and the air handle's over here, this wall right here is completely open to the to the vent. The insulation has fallen off, so so what needs to be done?
Needs a wall.
But this was his opinion, is that I, you need to block it, well, my opinion was very suddenly, we'll see it Saturday. It's only a section up this way, maybe, maybe some more, it it it's a trapezoid. You frame it off at some two by fours, put in some rock sole insulation, R thirty, you now have over R about R forty to fifty in there. Then you plasticize whatever, and then he suggested that we do some kind of a finished wood over it, like plywood. Said, well, you know, it's not as good area ceiling, none of, well, maybe we get some Luon, prices of the building materials are pretty expensive right now. But so I'm, we're con- contemplating actually finishing off that inside of that whole room with. The plywood, the the Luon on top of the insulation, after that, we should be fine.
Yeah.
And we wouldn't have to open up that uh that tile layer here.
Quarter inch Luon, we worked three eighths Luon, we worked fine.
Yup, or I I was even tempted to think maybe we should use some higher resheening, which is on the expensive side, but I don't know if I could use that. Uh with without. uh, with, without a, uh, finished surface on it because of fire. So I have to look at that, I don't think I can do that. But anyway, so that's that, let me go over this list. Information about becoming more energy efficient, less reliant on propane for heating at SLP, that's for Tuesday. Information about solar panels and tax incentives, pretend at the daycare building, that's for Tuesday, but I'll just have to save this about that, you both have gotten the information. Was sent when we, you both got the information when, um, Phil Allen came down from, from, uh, relevance of all the solar stuff. And I just gave copies to Glenn, so she can review and look at it. But basically, what we're pointing at is, and I don't wanna get into too deep, because we're going to discuss it Tuesday. Is having her take a loan, buy out the freaking, uh, the solar panels, because it's a difference of thirty thousand dollars. The list on it's about seventy-six, I believe, and with all the depreciation, if she can use all its tax benefits. Depreciation and, uh, the twenty first, twenty-sixth, seventh tax rate, to God, tax, um.
Rebates.
Rebate, thank you, and other stuff, it brings it down to the thirties. And if she were, just to give you that little nutshell, if she were to buy those panels, she would have to own them for five years, so basically, we would have to work out something legally that we own those panels after a given time. And then, like I said, we're gonna get into that more Tuesday about what my ideas about having to pay for that and get ownership of it. And I don't wanna go too much into that, I wanna make a statement afterwards and then I'm pretty much done for today. How many lighting options at the daycare building, already been, already done it, already got a, already got more, I mean, electricians look at it, we've already talked about it. We're just considering doing it, and we're gonna, and that, that money will come out of her, 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 uh, budget money, the money we collect from the rent, it's not gonna come out of, from the uh, out of the hundred and forty thousand dollars we gave to Mark. Let me see, efficiency development program, I've already been through conversations with them. Um, multipurpose room cleaning, repairs, the mold, I think we're, we'll look at it again this weekend, but Mark put the board back down, I saw today, and we're gonna look around, and that's down the road, I'm not too awful upset about that. What really bothers me is I'm really worried about this daycare for a number of reasons. But one thing that bothers me more than anything else is they don't have anybody in the place.
They don't have.
Anybody in the place.
You're talking about employees, children?
Both. It's becoming pretty weak, I mean, I'm going back to Suzie, I'm going back to Tina, and she had thirty to fifty kids in there all the time. They don't even have twenty, as far as I can tell, I don't sit around and take one, two, three, like that, but it's real minimal, and their staff is real thin. And that's a first indication, because they have to have two people in every room for staff. Uh, they lost their cook, she foreclosed on her house or something, and moved to Pennsylvania, Michelle. So now Erin's doing that, but anyway, I keep my eyes and ears open. And who's putting the foots to my ass, excuse me, is here I am over at Grad State Electric yesterday, getting prices for LED bulbs to figure out how we can minimize electricity usage for the place. So I'm going downstairs tonight to go in the, to go in the boiler room. Thirty lights are on and bathroom light and a fan.
And you turned it on?
Downstairs, just a gym, just upstairs is the gym.
You turned it just downstairs?
I turned that out and pulled it as well.
So, you know, uh, I'm gonna have to say something, but I, I don't, I don't, it's not a gym, or they just.
You need the timer lights. They don't have the timer lights.
Timer lights.
Wrong for now.
Well, I think if, you know, if Suzie heard that, I think she'd pick the freaking roof, but I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna cut them off from the scene, but you know, when you, when you think you're trying to help them and eliminate their, like, cut down their electric usage and try to put in solar panels and put in air heat pumps to save on fuel, and then you do that crap, that, that froze my butt. But anyway, next Tuesday, let me look at my, so I'm done with your list. And I'll be done with my.
That was good, that was good, good.
That is your list, eh, yeah. Shut up. Now what I wanna say.
All right, go ahead.
Everything else on my list here, boiler upgrade, lighting, oh, I have a question.
You have two minutes.
What? I have a question, I can't see, about three or four weeks ago, on the, on the Vermont, uh, Weekly Report, it came through that Governor Scott was gonna farm out two point two billion dollars of infra- infrastructure money to the towns. A lot of it was pointed towards energy efficiency upgrades. A part of it was getting e- energy efficient, energy, um, analysis of the building, which I've already talked to Chris up at, uh, up at, uh, up at, um, efficiency development, we basically already had, so I don't really have, we do, we had it done twenty sixteen, anyway. So what I'm driving at is immediately, we know we have a hundred and forty thousand dollars. That's all the money that we're, I've gotten and are gonna get this summer, total roughly, like, I, I don't know how close we're to.
A hundred and forty-four?
Yeah, twenty-two.
Roughly, roughly.
Seventy-nine each year, so that should be a hundred and fifty, fifty something.
Hundred and sixty. Oh, a hundred and fifty-eight then, maybe, I, I love, I love that, okay. Then with, with the lease, we're gonna get seventy-eight, four, starting Ju- July first, for that three-year span. Uh, we're flushed with quite a bit of money, and Dot and I spent some time making up this list, which we'll talk about Tuesday. And I made notes on the list, and I started thinking about all the money we could spend, just arc of mine. Just arc of mine. And we would use it all, based on what I have for a list. And I'm also, I'm not including so much what you have to say for your kind of work stuff, but I wanted to add to that, talk about that for a second. Uh, because I think that we could, when I saw that nine hundred dollar bill for oil today on the AP report, I was like, you gotta be, anyways.
Our, our house was eleven hundred and forty-nine dollars today, that's how much? Four dollars and many cents a gallon.
Eh, eh, Suzie, how she would think about spending thirty thousand dollars next year on, on gas, on propane? We, we have a, I think, I'm seeing, we got a big problem with that daycare. And if we're not careful, if we don't use our smarts to straighten, do it, we've already spent a lot, gone over eleven thousand dollars on the heating system in four months. That's outrageous.
We've spent in the last year, I think, close to twenty-five thousand dollars at that school.
Is that right?
Yes.
That's crazy.
Twenty-five grand, that's more than.
That's way, yeah, how about the four grand that fits in the water system, that brings you up to fifteen, sixteen without anything else, that's about two thousand dollars.
Right now, we have, like I said, forty-one hundred dollars, and we have a reduced rent of six hundred and sixty-seven dollars
Sixty-six.
For the next three months, so that's something.
That's two or more months, I know. Yeah, but, but everybody, I made this list that, that Dot and I made it, that she made, I actually give an example. Brookline meeting house, painting inside and outside of a wooden structure, ma- ma- maintenance, maintenance, sanctuary. Um, Suzie Peanut's budget, arc of mine, so I basically noted going, what I thought, where we could get the money to do each item. And when I did that, when I did that, I was adding up the dollars in my head, I wasn't using the whole hundred and forty thousand dollars at all. That's still left, shot, shot, left, but like I said, I'll go over it more Tuesday. And I think we should consider more about the efficient, I think your ideas about the equipment for this building are a great idea, especially having, we talked about a computer in this room. And, and do something, maybe start thinking about, well, how are we gonna make this, this building a little more efficient too?
By selling the school?
Hmm? What's that?
By selling the school.
You're not gonna be able to sell that school. Good luck, you're gonna sell a seven thousand square foot building out in the middle of nowhere, excuse me. The only, the only one that would, my, my thought, it would be maybe Kendall School, who would buy that?
I don't know.
It's not, it's not good for anything.
It's just a thought.
Uh, yeah, it's not, it's just not a good thought, actually, because uh, I, it's our building, and the, the way to do it, if you're gonna get, go down that road, when, the real, way to really do it is fix that, make it efficient, make it work, make it work for the town of Brookline. Suzie falls in and be, is able to use that building, if she ever stops using that building, then this town was in that town, town, uh, building, and you sell this building, which is in beautiful shape, and you wouldn't have to ask as much money for it, and somebody could come in here have a DOT officer letter, and they could easily retrofit it, and you could take a couple hundred thousand dollars and, and renovate whatever you have to do that's on the building, and whatever's left in town, you give back to taxes, whatever, I will be around that problem.
Let me just, let me just, excuse me.
All right, let's, let's, let's go on.
Okay, I'm done, uh, everything's, unless anybody's got a question, Russ is gonna do it Tuesday.
No, I think you can be good job, I know you were part of, part of it.
I mean, we're flushed with a lot of money, if we use, it's a positive thing. We don't have to work like drunken sailors here, but if we use our, my opinion, if we use our equity, use our leverage properly, we can make that hundred and forty thousand dollars out of the other seventy-four out of Suzie's, uh, budget and really do some monster damage to these buildings and the buildings down. And when we're done in the next year and a half, we'd be quite surprised.
All right, thank you very much, um, Glenn, you wanna just spell us, spell us in for Peter for, uh, Green Up Day?
Green Up Day, Timbo, Madelena, Lucy, Madalena, Lucy, said we would be more than happy to stay with that. And so that's all taken care of.
All right, so I was gonna ask if you could follow through, if he needs anything, or we need to contact any, or, or we pay for bills or whatever that you helped to.
Green up bags, yeah.
I already noting, notified him that the green up bags were here, and I haven't heard back from him. And he doesn't answer my emails, and he doesn't answer my phone calls, so, yeah.
I got his email that I sent him, sent that, the address unknown, so he's changed that.
Yeah. Yeah, exactly.
He was a student, so his email was a student email, referencing and placing a lot of callers.
He did tell me that he's working, what you said, he did.
Kendall's, his, his number, yeah. So I, the number I had to reach him was a cell phone number from another state that he still has.
Yeah.
So I can give you that if you.
I have it.
Oh, you have it, okay.
But I got no answer.
Oh, well, I called him and, and he's answered, on that cell phone.
Yeah, I called it, no, got no answer.
Can we, uh, put that on? And say that Green Up Day.
It's called Timbo.
Is coming?
T I M B O.
Is that who's in charge of Green Up Day?
Yes. That's his first name.
Madalena.
Do we have that?
Madalena. His last name, Glenn's gonna spell it.
I'm gonna spell it, because it's Madelena, M A D D E L E N A dash Lucy, L U C E Y.
Glenn, may I ask, could you put a listserv memo out about the, the May date and that he is the contact person for people?
I think he said he was gonna do that.
All right, all right, okay, we will do it then, we need to get that advertised for people to know, sign up, all right, great. All right, and quickly go through communications, regular mail, we got something from Vermont Land Trust, members of the select board. Uh, they're applying for a grant for Vermont Housing and Conservation. They're notifying the, that the spring VLT will be closing on the grant development, right, conservation restrictions and public access easement on approximately six hundred and twenty-two acres of land located in Athens, Brookline and Townsend. The grant will be co-held by VLT and VHCB. Uh, of the six hundred and twenty-two acres, three hundred and eighty-four on Athens, one eighty-five at Brookline and fifty-three in Townsend. A copy of the grant is available upon request, uh, and it will be sent to the Brookline, Townsend, and Athens Town Clerks. So there's more information, so this is what we sent, a letter of, a letter of support.
Yes.
Particularly projects, if you'd like to read that. Um, another letter came in here from Wyndham Regional Commission. This is a potential, any potential big bridge projects need to be submitted to Wyndham Regional by Monday, May ninth, for a V trans piloting infrastructure project. Okay, so, okay.
Give that to Stan.
Yeah. There's a free train for listeners, um, if anybody wants to do the listeners, uh, we already.
We got that in the mail.
Okay, um, Wyndham Regional, I did speak with or communicated with Alyssa Sabato about the HUTB, um, HUTB, um, mitigation plan, and so that, that has been done as we, as required. This municipal highway grant application, who, who, who fills this out?
That came, that came from, uh, Melissa, I mean, uh, Megan sent that also, this was, uh, an opportunity for us, it's a grant, municipal highway grant application.
Does Archie fill it out, or?
Talk to him again, I don't know what this was for. You remember the, what that was, Stan, when they were talking about from, uh, Megan, in regards to if that was another grant opportunity?
Uh, we, she recommended that we consider a particular grant.
Right.
Uh, program. And she indicated that the application for it was not online.
Right.
So she promised that she would send it to us for our purposes, whatever they may be. So we ought to hold on to this, if there's a file for municipal highway grants, or I can put it with my other paperwork that I'm carrying around.
Well, you can.
Someday, I'm gonna create a file for here, or add to the file that's out there.
Well, I think you should have a file right here in the select room, select room, where you can have all this, and you be the person that knows where it is, and anybody else who needs to look at it can find it right in the, because we have, uh, file cabinets for this, which we're here.
Right, right, and the only thing that will materialize over time is, there's a number of materials on the door out there, and that's our, second one in, the first one in. Uh, I think it's the first one in the bottom drawer, and then there's some over here, there's gotta be some melting, those two at some point in time.
Yeah. Yeah.
And I'd be happy to work on that, uh, and keep everyone abreast of where and what things are, where things are, what that, what's in them, et cetera, and some manner, shape, that's organized, and the other thing that I mentioned a thought in the past is at home on my computer, and I got it backed up, I've got a ten terabyte drive. I've, anything that I have been working on is in a file on the computer in the town of Brookline. And I don't know if there's anything like that here, but I have no problem copying my drive, or my directory on that drive, to bring it in here, so that virtually anything that I have regarding grant applications, copies of documents, et cetera, et cetera, is on, uh, the computer.
Do you have a Dropbox account?
A what?
A Dropbox account?
I've heard of it, but I don't know what is exactly, it sounds like it's a cloud thing.
Okay, it's. Yeah, it's something where we share different things.
Yeah.
So basically, we could set up some files in the treasury, uh, treasury emails and, you know, in a Dropbox. And it's a cloud thing, so, you know, it's pretty safe, uh, we'll talk about that, but we can, you know, put everything
Yeah.
so that there's accessibility and, um, you know, in the event that, um, something, you know, God forbid, we have a place that we have it in the cloud, that we can access it all the time, that would be the, the best way.
Okay.
Great, um, my last.
I don't believe in the cloud, I'm sorry.
So the last piece of mail I got here is from Wyndham Solid Waste Management District, in their letter, asking for a letter of support, which I'm willing to supply to them. They are trying to obtain a grant to, for, basically for increasing the composting facility at Wyndham, Wyndham, uh,
Facility.
Yes, solid waste, um, from two thousand cubic yards to four thousand cubic yards. Uh, and so they're just asking if we would like to, um, uh, write a letter and support, and if that's all right with the select board, I will support that there, there needs to do that. And at that time, I'm gonna move on to, um, pay orders.
Now, it's very cool, and, uh, payroll.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion that the board concurs with my action of signing the, uh, payroll warrant number twenty-two dash thirty-six dated March thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two in the amount of two thousand four hundred and sixty dollars and sixty-three cents, may I have a second? Seconded by Stan, any discussion? Here and none, all those in favor of concurring with the signing of the payroll warrant twenty-two dash thirty-six for two thousand four hundred and sixty dollars and sixty-three cents, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay, thank you very much, pass it down to Simon. I'd like to make a motion that the board approve a cash payable warrant twenty-two dash thirty-nine dated April sixth, two thousand. dated April sixth, two thousand twenty-two in the amount of nineteen thousand eight hundred nineteen dollars and seventy-seven cents, may I have a second?
A second?
Seconded by when? Any dis- discussion?
Discussion? Yes.
Stan, uh Stan.
There is an expense there for bond interest. I was under the understanding that we paid that once a year and it was uh in the latter part of November, early December this past year. We had an expense for the ten thousand dollars, which is the principal part, and we had another expense, I thought it was of twenty-nine hundred and some odd dollars for the interest portions, so I'm not sure what this interest is all about, at thirteen hundred dollars.
What is it, I'm, I'm sorry, what?
The bond interest for the uh.
We pay it twice a year.
Oh, we pay twice a year?
Yes, twice a year, yes.
So it's half of the, roughly twenty-eight hundred dollars, okay, okay, so I, that explains it.
We paid a bond once, but we paid the interest twice a year.
Okay.
Alright, any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving a cash payable warrant twenty-two thirty-nine in the amount of nineteen thousand eight hundred nineteen dollars and seventy-seven cents, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Hearing none, the motion passes. I'm just gonna send that to you. Okay, um set agenda for the regular select board meeting on April twentieth. Finish the vendor review, any updates on the salt and sand shed? And.
Beamers?
Just gonna be adds to that.
Beamers, what's, what is that, V?
I'm sorry, V I N.
Oh, V E, V E, V E R S for, for the uh four oh one three, four oh one three, and also uh AR, ARPA review.
And Mark has some information about that, we'll excavate it, okay.
And, and, yeah, well, that's always in there, yeah, excavate it, okay, so.
And then the uh, the uh summary of the online bids that you got for the, the leaf floor. So that, that would be.
Leaf floor.
And then the result of my request to have the thirty-six thousand dollars added back.
Okay. Excellent. Alright, um anything else, I'll just, you know, we've got some funding yet, um alright, we will have a working session on next Wednesday at
No, Tuesday.
Tuesday at one o'clock, um to discuss for Parker a little bit further. Uh anything else, I'm going to adjourn this meeting, the meeting is adjourned, the time is now nine twenty-seven P M, thank you all very, very much.
Thank you.